Alright, everybody. We are calling this meeting to order. It is now six o'clock PM. Dylan, can you do a roll call vote?
Alan?
Here.
Thank you. Lucina?
Yes.
Merchi?
Yes.
Narita? Bruce Wong? Boital?
Here.
Welch? Murakawa? Thank you. Weitzel?
Here.
Mattson? Persons? I believe Persons is joining via cellphone. I'll double check. Linda Wong? Velasco?
Here.
Alright, that is seven. One short of quorum without the confirmation from Don Persons. Don, are you available? Oh. Oh. I see Bertram's on. We do have quorum. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. And just to let you know, after the agenda was published a couple of days ago, board member Laura Saint Denise informed me that she was resigning from the board. So, we will miss her. She was a good part of the community for a long time and, you know, we wish her well. We will go into Public Safety Monthly Reports. First up, Honolulu Fire Department. Is Honolulu Fire Department available? Hearing, no representative. If someone comes in a ten later, we can always go back. Up next, Honolulu Police Department, District Six.
Hi, Lieutenant Ono from District Six Waikiki. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll go over the stats from last month. Robberies had four this month. Previous month before that was five. Burglaries, twelve this month. Previous month, six. Thefts, one seventy. Previous month, one seventy-eight. UEMVs, seventeen. The previous month, nineteen. Assaults, twenty-five. Previous month, thirty-five. Sex crimes, four. Previous month, three. Bike skateboard on sidewalk, thirty-three this month. Previous month, fifty-nine. Speeding, sixteen. And previous month, twenty-nine. Parking, two thousand three hundred eighty-three. Previous month, one thousand eight hundred ninety-four. Loud mufflers, thirty-one. And previous month, twelve. And that citations. Park closures, a hundred thirty-three citations, eight arrests. And the previous month was eighty-six citations, nine arrests. And total calls for service was five thousand two hundred fifty-eight. And the previous month was five thousand two hundred ninety-two. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to ask HPD District Six any questions from the public here? No? How about from the public online? Are there any questions for HPD District Six? Seeing none. Board members here? Board member Velasco?
Yes, this is a question to all the police districts. I've been doing a lot of reading and research on the police needing, their need of hiring more police force. And I was wondering if in that need is also the requirement to add or the knowledge that it would be nice to add social workers and psychologists so that they could actually start forming psychiatric emergency response teams that would go out with the police when we, since we have such a huge homeless situation and such a huge issue with the mentally ill. I would just like to put that out there and ask if, I have heard that maybe you are doing that already, but would like a briefing on what is being done. Thank you.
Yeah, so in Waikiki, we already have, throughout the day, there's a, I don't know if you guys know CORE, they come out and they actually meet with the homeless. They talk to them, see if they need any help and everything, but they're pretty much out here daily. As far as us hiring, I don't, I don't know, maybe Lieutenant Nakamura knows more than I do, but I don't know of any hiring process that we're doing. That's probably going to be done by the city or state.
Okay, thank you. There any questions from members of the public online again? Seeing none. Any from board members online? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we will go to Honolulu Police Department, District Seven.
Hi, Aloha. Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with District Seven. Also online is Sergeant Rance Okano. Will be taking over after I retire. To answer your question before I forget, we're almost, I think the last, the last hot sheet we had, we're above four hundred officers short, approaching five hundred with the people that are eligible to retire. So yeah, it is a critical shortage. The difficulty, just like Lieutenant Ono had mentioned, yeah, the city has been, has recognized that there is, I mean, anybody can see there is an absolute problem with the mental health care system as it stands right now and the homeless situation. And the city has been trying this CORE program. It's a start. But I think it's also important to know where the lines and boundaries of what are the responsibilities of police and law enforcement and social work and long-term housing, that kind of stuff is. And we all just need to work, I think, as a community, as a whole society, to try to address this problem. So I just wanted to get that out there before I completely forgot my train of thought because I've been doing that recently a lot. So let me do the stats for District Seven. For the month of May as compared to the previous month. So motor vehicle thefts were six and six. Burglaries were seven as compared to nine. Thefts in general were twenty-five as compared to twenty-two. And UEMVs, which is theft from autos, that was five as compared to fourteen. I believe that drop is directly attributed to some special projects that we've been doing in and around the Diamond Head lookouts area. This is out of total calls of service of seven thousand one hundred twenty-three for the district. And further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And our safety tip for the month is just to remind folks, we are getting into hurricane season. It's going to hit us unfortunately statistically. It will. We missed a major, huge run with that Mawar or whatever that went through Guam and up towards Taiwan and stuff. That could have just as easily hit us. So it's just, it's just a reminder. I believe I sent the flat, the handout to you folks via email, but I wanted to stress that there's also the HNL.info that you can use that has a lot of good information on it. And the Department of Emergency Management website has a lot of good information on that also. So definitely don't forget your fourteen-day kits and it's always better to be ready than not so ready. And that's our tip for the month.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the audience or concerns for HPD District Seven? Seeing none. Board members here in person? Seeing none. Members of the community online. I see Daisy Morai.
Thanks Chair. Lieutenant Nakamura, congratulations and mahalo for serving the community. We will be missing you, but I'm sure you're going to be much busier now with retirement coming than you are now. And then, of course, to the rest of the HPD staff, we really appreciate all the services that you've been doing and will be doing. My question is, do HPD officers also carry NAMCAP? Those sprays, like the EMS for opioids?
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, Daisy, don't worry. I'll be here for a little bit longer. You'll have to put up with me for a little bit longer, a couple more years.
That's no problem.
Trying to train our new sergeant into his newfound duties, but yes, I think what you're referring to is Narcan.
Narcan, yeah, correct.
In District Seven, we've been carrying Narcan for the past several years. And, which is a good thing because it's an emergency type of medicine. And it can help in certain situations that people have overdoses and stuff. There is a, I don't know what to call it except an incredible increase. It's almost a crisis situation with the increase in this drug called fentanyl. It's easily transmissible. If you touch it, you can, you can, it can be ingested into your body. So that's why we carry Narcan. It has saved lives. I believe in District Six, just this past weekend, it saved some people's lives. Not everyone, but we had a situation where that was used. I don't know if it was by police or by EMS, but yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing. It's not, it's not the cure-all, of course, but it is a very good thing, Narcan.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, are there any other members of the public? Seeing none. Board members online? Margaret?
I was, I was watching the city council hearing yesterday and Jim Ireland, the EMS guy, was on it. And he said that they're going to start putting them in all bars and restaurants in high, you know, high whatever, sensitive areas. But he said that sometimes people don't react to one shot of it. And he's seen them having to use four containers or whatever of it. And I wanted to ask the Waikiki man, I forgot to ask, have you seen any improvement with the beach closure hours? Have you seen any, anything different, anything positive, or are they still around?
Yeah, I work days, but I haven't really talked to the nighttime lieutenant. But I know it just started, yeah, so it's going to take a couple of weeks to really get more data on that to see what's really going on.
We walk at six o'clock three times a week from the Elks Club down to Aluer Street. And it kind of, it's not, there's not as many people there, but they're still around. It's tough, I know, with the ACLU.
Yeah, you mean by the pavilions?
Right by the police station.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, are there any other board members online who have questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Okay, low up.
Up next, we have Community Concerns/Public Testimony. Are there any members of the public? I see Laura Ruby.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to screen share for just a minute. Sorry, my kitty's in the way. Okay, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I sent this out to a lot of people and I wanted to communicate with you folks also. I would like the mayor to respond to this because the design of the Nahtono Bridge has just been so overwhelmingly large and monstrous and the concrete, I don't know, just unimaginable. And then this is just two examples here of the Kalakaua Bridge and the bridges at the Ala Moana Park. And you can just see how nice and gracious they are. They have a nice design quality. I'm not saying they have to be, the bridge, if it were to be built, has to be exactly like these. But notice there's piers in the center of the waterway and it's just a gracious, gracious bridge. And then, this is Dave Barber of our neighborhood board ate, was in Iowa helping his sister. And he happened to have lunch here by this bridge. And just notice how simple it is crossing the same body of water that's like the canal. So there just seems to be no reason why it can't be that way. So piers and posts are fine, nothing intrusive that's way up in the air and so forth. And then, just two other things. This is the McCully Bridge, aerial view of it. And notice that there's a bump out below and it could easily be widened and used on the Diamond Head side for bikes and pedestrians. Now it's squished and really should not be that. It's easily retrofitted at a very low cost. And then just the other one, just to show you, the Ala Nayo Bridge. How small it is, it's not particularly well-designed, but it's smallish and it does convey the bicycle and pedestrian people. So I'll put my email address in the chat if you'd like my whole write-up on it. And I just would like the mayor's representative, if that person is here, to please ask the mayor for a meeting with myself. I've asked that before too. So, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you Laura. I'm sorry, any members in the audience here who have a public concern or anything? Any, any topic? Okay, so we'll get to the agenda item on that. So, oh.
My only concern or my concerns are the crosswalks in front of Safeway and Leonard. If we could, the unmanned one, the unlit ones. Seen a lot of people just randomly going on a bit, feel like it. Ninety percent of people that are going to Leonard's are either going left or right to a bit. Crosswalk, safer, on that. That has like stops traffic for them. So instead of using that crosswalk any time, people are hitting cars, turning left and then walking right in front of traffic that's driving a lot of cars. So eliminate those crosswalks because it's one in either direction that we're most likely to block. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much. And he will take note of that and that can be sent to the appropriate department. For audience members online, I see Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name is Robert Armstrong. I'm visiting from the downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board where I am a member. And I'm visiting all neighborhood boards here on our island to let you know about a meeting that we have planned on August nineteenth. That's a Saturday, Saturday, nineteen August at 1:00 PM. This is for any board member coming or going or for the general public. Everyone is invited for a meeting on August nineteenth at eleven fifty-two Smith Street in Chinatown. That's the old Channel Fourteen television studios. It's now the New Life Center. Eleven fifty-two Smith Street also has Honolulu City Garage parking right behind the building. So it's very accessible for the public. And here's why we're having a meeting. Some of you, before the meeting started even, were talking about this, that there might be some concerns about the Neighborhood Commission and the Neighborhood Board as well as the integrity of our elections, the work that the Neighborhood Commission does, Executive Secretary. The fact that the Neighborhood Plan isn't being followed as it was written and it hasn't been updated in many, many years. In fact, it's probably been since Mayor Fosse, since anybody has really looked at the Neighborhood Commission and how it operates. And so, we decided to take the bull by the horns and to call a meeting, an organizational meeting, a grassroots meeting for all people of this island on Saturday, nineteen August at 1:00 PM, again at eleven fifty-two Smith Street in Chinatown, so that we could begin a discussion to really truly make the system that we all believe in and that we all participate in, that we all trust, to make this system more responsive, more democratic than what it is. It's always good to take a look at the institutions that we work with and to sharpen it and to make it more responsive to the public as well as to the needs of the public. And so, we thought we would start somewhere. On August nineteenth, Saturday at 1:00 PM at the New Life Center, eleven fifty-two Smith Street. Again, everyone is involved. There is no set agenda. We'll set it at the meeting and then we'll divide into committees and we'll figure out where we're going to go in a true grassroots fashion. So I hope that each and every one of you come and participate and try to make the Neighborhood Board system better than what it is. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Laura, did you still have your hand up? Thank you. Any other members of the public? Please be reminded that this is for the public. Board member Wong. Are there any other members of the public? Seeing none. Okay, we will move on to the next agenda item. Government Administration Reports. First up, Mayor's Representative.
Excuse me Chair, are you saying that board members are not allowed to talk on public testimony, community concerns?
Yes, these spaces are for the public to have an opportunity to raise things to board members or for awareness.
What if the board member wants to raise awareness to everyone? I've always been able to talk on this agenda item.
I guess I would figure that normally someone would request something to be on the agenda if they wanted to talk about it.
Not always. Sometimes it's just a little short something. It doesn't have to be. I've been on the board for thirty years and this is the kind of thing that's bothering me. The whole way we're going about things as a board has changed now. Resolutions written by community members, resolutions and put on the agenda when normally somebody comes in, like the man that was just talking and said he had a concern about the crosswalk at Safeway. And then the board would decide if they wanted to take that subject up and help that person. And then the board would write an agenda, not the public person off the board. This is a complete change from how we've been doing things for thirty years that I know of. And there's been no talk about it, nothing.
Well, I think part of the problem is the way a lot of things have operated for many years have been wrong. But if you would like to share a public community concern as a board member at this moment, you can go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm very concerned about our board and I think others are having the same problem. Like, just what I said, the public are writing resolutions, like say that one about traffic common on Diamond Head. And then in that resolution, it says he wants to rebuild his residence on Bytong's on Coconut Avenue. Those are two completely subject matters. And that's not the way you write a resolution. It's supposed to be about one thing. So, and then the chair puts it on the agenda and we've had no, we don't even know what's coming up on the agenda and the resolution is already written. So I don't know where these resolutions are coming from. They go to the chair and then the chair puts them on. But this is not the way we've operated for the last thirty years.
Are you referring to that resolution for Diamond Head Road?
That is the one I was referring, that the first one came to mind.
Okay, well, that was given, that was given to me to, and it didn't just come from a community member. It was also forwarded to me by a board member. So I'm not over here doing that. And if there is anyone else who would like to forward things to be put on the agenda, they have every right to and it is my legal obligation to put those things on the agenda if they are forwarded to be by board members. So please stop saying that there's impropriety when there is not.
There have never been resolutions handed straight to the chair and the chair puts them on the agenda. Usually the citizenry comes to us, says they have a problem and then we talk about ways to help them and then we write a reso and we help them. It's not already, because we have no control over a resolution that somebody else has.
Like I said, I did not draft that resolution. I did not do anything with that. That was given to me by a board member.
Please, I did not say you wrote it. And that's not what I have in mind here. I'm not trying to browbeat the chair. This is not against the chair. I'm talking about the protocol, how we're doing things. And I've never seen so many resolutions from people in the district or wherever that writes resolutions and then all of a sudden they're on our agenda. People usually go to the Neighborhood Board, the Neighborhood Board, here's the subject, and then we decide if we want to take that matter up. So I-
Well, thank you.
These resolutions are in error a lot of times.
Yeah, noted. I mean, if we had community members who would like to bring things to us, I mean, I would appreciate that. We just don't ever really. I mean, barely anyone is here right now from the audience. But if we did, then I would encourage residents to come to our meetings and then we could maybe have things to talk about.
I just have a problem with resolutions already written by the community. And, you know, there are mistakes in them. You probably have counted that. And then we follow whatever they say and approve it. It's not right.
Okay, well, thank you.
I will be attending and thank you to the man that just said there's going to be a meeting coming up. I will be sure and attend that.
Alright, moving on to the next agenda item. Mayor's Representative. Is there anyone tonight under the category Mayor's Representative?
Aloha Chair, my name is Jiro Sumada. I'm the Deputy Director at Department of Planning and Permitting. I had thought Anton Krupke was going to be here to answer questions. I'm here to answer the questions relating to DPP.
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah.
I can go over the questions that Anton, I have the report, so if you want me to go over his part, I can do that too.
Sure. If you don't mind.
So let's see. The first question, the Royal Waikiki Garden, residents raised concerns regarding multiple commercial and advertisements they've witnessed on private organization, of a private organization's proposal to replace Alaway Golf Course with a Royal Waikiki Garden. Is the city ENV aware of the proposal and if so, are there any updates? Okay, so this is from the Department of Environmental Management. They say, please close this issue for ENV and route to Department of Enterprise Services, DES. The ENVs has confirmed with the, conferred, confirmed to DES that they will, they will take- that they will, they will take care of the golf courses. Okay, so Department of Enterprise Services says they are not involved with this proposal, and it is not interested in this for the Alowai Golf Course at this time. So the next question was Pocky Park Noise Disturbances. This was sent to D P R, Public Parks and Recreation, and also Police Department. A resident raised concerns that with consistent noise disturbances occurring at Pocky Park in the evening hours most days of the week, the resident noted that they would, that they prefer not to bother H P D on this issue. But when it is necessary to call H P D, responding officers do not adequately address the issue as the noise disturbances continue after the police department issues a warning. A resident is requesting H P D to increase patrols and enforcement of park rules. Okay, so the police department's response is, H P D requests additional time to prepare a response. Please retain question on next month's report. And then from the Parks Department, they said, no permits have been issued during the evening hours at Pocky Community Park. The public is encouraged to contact H P D if they witness any illegal activity or people in the park during park closure hours. And the third item is for parks, again for parks, installing additional signage. Concern was in regards to the noise disturbances at Pocky Park. It was requested that D P R consider installing additional signage for, one, no illegal parking in the driveway of the park and on Leahi Avenue. Number two, courtesy signs reminding park users to respect their neighbors. And three, more signs detailing the park hours and rules. So the Parks' response to that is, on the first one, number one, street signage along Leahi Avenue is under the management of Department of Transportation Services. Department of Parks and Recreation signs stating, do not block the driveway. We are already present at the base yard driveway. Number two, H P D enforces park rules and park closure hours. So I guess that should be directed to the Parks, I mean, the Police Department. And then number three, D P R installed an additional sign with park hours near the park's entrance along Leahi Avenue. Chair, shall I continue? Or is Ms. Wong has a question?
Is there anything else you would just like to summarize or briefly add to the report? Or is that, is that, okay?
There's quite a number of items, yeah. And I haven't gotten to my part yet either.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if you just want to go through, that's fine. I think that, you know, if you just wanted to kind of just do brief overpasses over them.
Okay, fine. So number four, the fourth question is again for Department of Parks and Recreation, a squeaky swing. A resident requested that the swing at Pocky Park be repaired. That is very noisy and is often used late at night. The reply from Parks and Recreation is, the swing set at Pocky Park was lubricated on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So let me get to my question. Number five, for Department of Planning and Permitting, a resident asked for D P P to provide a step-by-step process of how D P P currently analyzes and approves slash denies requests for permits for residential and commercial property developments. This is in relation to the previous corruption cases against D P P employees. Okay, so Chair, I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Hopefully, I can. Oh, here we go. So should have said this. So I hope you folks can see this. It's the, this is the D P P website or webpage. It is at honololodpp.org. And I should have sent, I put it in the chat, but I was too swift, fast to switch the screen. So I'll put it in the chat, the website address. So this is our webpage, our D P P webpage. To get to, I'm just providing you a visual of the process. So under this Permitting tab, these dropdown menu comes up under Building Permits. Pick it, and you get this page. And then you go to Apply, and you have these Submit Applications to D P P Building Permit. Pick on that, and you will get this screen. And it provides you information about submitting a permit application. So, but that's just for reference. I just want to use this visual because this is, kind of summarizes the process for both residential and commercial permits. So basically, the first two items is to apply. You would go online, and you would submit the application and upload your plans. And you see this, that's the first two items. And the second one is called Pre-Screen. So once we have received your application in the system, our staff, well, actually, the pre-screen is done in two parts. The first part is a artificial intelligence, what we call a bot system or application. The bot system will automatically review the plans that have been submitted and uploaded to make sure it's in the right format. And it's like the borders around the construction plans, the project title and the name, and there's an empty block that needs to be left open for our stamp. So all those type of formatting requirements are reviewed by an artificial intelligence bot program. And if there are discrepancies in the format of your design plans, it gets kicked back to the applicant to make changes and upgrades. So it goes through that automatic screening process. And then, once it completes four checklist items of a list of ten pre-screen, then it goes to a manual pre-screen for checklist items five through ten. And that's where our staff will review the application and the construction plans that were submitted or uploaded online to make sure they have all the other information that we need to start to do the plan review. Typically, just to, as a frame of reference, review process for residential permits on the pre-screening. Last summer, it took us twenty-four weeks. You know, it was a considerable amount of time. But now we've streamlined it, and now that pre-screening process takes about nine weeks. So we're getting faster, and so are the people submitting applications, mainly because the architects and engineers that normally submit plans, they're, once they get the format down, then, you know, it's more like you just cut and paste as far as the design goes. But the formatting of the actual plan sheet itself is pretty much set for them. So anyway, we've streamlined the pre-screen process. After the pre-screen process, an application goes to what's called Plan Review. That's where our residential and our commercial plan checkers will actually review the plan to see how it matches up with the building code and the housing code. So that has typically taken twelve weeks. And from last summer, that twelve-week period is still taking about twelve weeks. And that includes not only the time our staff reviews it, but it includes the time that we find errors or issues that we have that the design doesn't meet the code requirements. We send it back to the applicant for them to make the corrections. They resubmit to us, and then we check it again. And then sometimes this goes on for two or three cycles of us reviewing the plans, making comments, and then returning it to the applicant to make corrections and resubmit it. So that whole back and forth under the plan review is taking about twelve weeks or three months. And that's, we have, we, pretty much the same as far as time-wise from last summer to this year. And then the last part is this Permit Issuance. Permit issuance is once a plan has been checked and it meets all the code requirements for the building code, housing code, and all the different codes that we enforce for, it goes into what's called Permit Issuance. Permit issuance is, we call up the applicant or email them and send them a notice that says, your plans are ready for pickup. Please bring your permit fee check to the Fosse Building or Kapolei Office along with your contractor statement. So that is like a one-day thing. But what happens is, the applicant now needs to come in and bring in the check and the contractor statement. In the past, last year, that process took about eight weeks. So that's like a one day for us, and the rest of the time is with the applicant getting his check and picking up his plans and with the contractor statement. Now we've reduced that to three weeks. So it used to take eight weeks last year, now it's three weeks. So we, basically, overall, we've streamlined the process for permit issuance from about two hundred ninety-eight days last year, last summer. Now we're about a hundred sixty-eight days currently. And in fact, depending on the dollar value of your permit, the smaller dollar value is usually an easier or a less complex project. So in actuality, we issue the permit a lot faster than a hundred sixteen days. On the, on the commercial side, last summer, it was taking us about two hundred eighty-six days or about forty-one weeks. We've got it down to about thirty-two weeks. So it's still a long process, and we are still trying to improve the commercial side plan review or permit issuance process. But we're, we have like about fifteen engineer vacancies that we're trying to fill. Now, after the permit is issued, then it goes to inspection. That means the contractor can start construction. And then the contractor knows how to get in touch with us for inspection. And then after the construction is complete, they call for the final inspection. And then we close the permit and we issue the certificate of occupancy. So this is the process of how permits are issued and inspected for residential and commercial projects. So I think that answers the question number six. I'm going to keep it on here. But let me answer question number, jump to number eight, that talks about flood zones. A resident asked, what considerations does D P P use when approving sites for development that are shown in projected flood zones? Okay, so, and for, this is a D P P webpage again. You go to Permitting. You go to, the dropdown menu comes to Site Development. So you pick on Site Development. Under Site Development, you have all these things. And the one that I would, I'm directing you to is this one called Subdivision. So you pick on Subdivision. And then under Subdivision, there is flood hazard applications. And then, under flood hazard applications, there's this one, Instructions for Filing a Floodway Permit and Instructions for Filing a Flood Hazard Variance. So the question relates to what kind of things does D P P consider? If you look at this floodway permit, it tells you all the different things we require you to submit with a application. So it's like a site plan that shows the dimension of the lot, the flood hazard area. So you need to have a surveyor or an engineer kind of map this out on a set of construction plans. Fill areas, storage areas, location of elevations. And then if you have a building on it, like a house or a commercial structure, you need to have the information about the building, the base floor, flood elevation, and then the other, what is this, local title, datum, elevation references, and then proposed floodproofing measures. So, and a topographic survey. So these are what's considered in that application for a flood, floodway permit, and then a flood hazard variance. Then we would consider this other information that you would also submit in addition to that master application. So basically, it's just a lot more detailed information that goes into that. But if you go to our website, and I will stop sharing. Okay, stop sharing. And I will send you this. Okay, so I just put in the D P P website, the address, the webpage address. It's honololodpp.org. So that is where I showed all these slides that I was just talking through. And that's where you would go to get that information. For the flood zone, again, you go to the webpage, look for Instructions for Filing Floodway Permit and also the flood hazard variance to see what D P P considers for approving a site for development flood zone. Okay, then, let's see. Okay, then, question number seven was Updating Infrastructure. A resident asked how our infrastructure is being upgraded to accommodate predicted flooding that will occur. So, okay. This one, we are recommending that you review the webpage site for the City's Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency. And let me put that webpage in there. So, in the chat. I hope I spelled it. resilientohahu.org. So if you go to that website, they will have a lot of information about how our infrastructure is being upgraded to accommodate predicted flooding or impacts of climate change. Sorry, Chair, let me, I think that's it. I think that's it.
All right, no worries. Thank you so much. So I'll go to the audience first. Is there anyone here from the public tonight who has a question, comment, or concern for the Mayor's Representative here tonight? Question? Yes, please.
Okay, Chair, I see a question.
Yeah, we have someone here in the public first.
There's a lot of new signs, and some new signs are going up in Upper Land Park. They say, no dogs allowed. In the big signs in the park, the evidence, animals all the dogs enjoy the parks. I mean, my question is, why do these signs go up? Is it going to be some kind of plant down now on people and the dogs in the park?
Okay, Chair, I kind of caught bits and pieces of that. If you could rephrase the question.
Yeah, it was about Yeah, the resident was yeah, there uh the resident was commenting on there being signs appearing now, uh large signs that say no dogs at parks, um like Kapialani Park. And uh I guess she was just inquiring um as to those signs. You know, if there are any, I guess, new restrictions or anything on um dogs at the park.
Okay, I can follow up with uh Parks and Rec. Any new restrictions?
Uh okay, so anything for board members here, Arlene?
Yes, um I was, I think, the one that was responsible for the question regarding the flood zones and the the um considerations with these buildings. In particular, I am concerned about the predicted rise in the sea level that UH has come up with and their maps. I have been studying their maps and looking at where some of these large developments have been approved. And if you look at the maps and you look at these developments that are currently approved, they're they're gonna be flooded, they're gonna be under, you know, at least the lower levels underwater. So my concern is, you know, are are the designs that have been approved? Have they put those considerations into place? In other words, are their basements sealed? Are there, you know, plans that the first story can be basically flooded and still survive? Um those kind of considerations. Thank you.
Okay, uh Chair, may I answer that?
Uh sure.
So as a general uh overstatement about how the process works, any any development, whether it be a commercial or residential, if it is located within a flood zone, it it actually goes through a a different additional review by our our staff and they do check for compliance with the um requirements of the of floodplain management program. So uh I would say that, yes, they are re are required to have additional measures that make sure that the the base floor elevation of the habitable floors are above the flood required zones that are there and that uh any any structure, part of the structure that is below that is treated accordingly. And it's like what you indicated, any pumps or protections that will prevent serious damage to the structure. So or that they could, they're restricted from having any other type of um occupancy on those lower floor levels. So, yes, there are added measures or reviews that structures in a floodplain or flood zone need to go through.
Um thank you. So that that uh the, for instance, the UH maps and are being looked at and the areas are being flagged as flood zones even though they're not in a flood zone now. Is that correct?
So so the the new maps, I I personally, I'm not aware of the the sea level rise maps that UH is producing. Uh we go by the FEMA flood maps that come from the Federal Emergency Management Agency flood maps. And that's the ones we use to administer the floodplain management program. The sea level rise or those are like a coastal zone program that, so I cannot speak specifically to that about the UH, the new maps that UH is coming up with. Uh but uh I'm sure that if they are approved and submitted through the coastal zone management program that the state administers and that we will follow suit to make sure that those maps are complied with also. But I think they do need to go through an approval process. So I don't know what stage they're at as far as being adopted by the state or the city.
All right, thank you. Um I will go to um members of the members of the public line, Daisy.
Thanks, Chair. Uh Mrs. Sumata, the question is, there's a commercial building already built on Winem and Kapahula Avenue, which looks beautiful because it's not tall. And there's another uh commercial building being built on Charles Street, right behind Leonard's Bakery. The question is, are there any more um upscale buildings to be built on this um Kapahula area? Because I understand we're part of the DPP plan to have more high rises, like six stories in this area. So my concern is, um we don't want to be like we're eating with a forty-three story tall condominium complex, which will really snarl up traffic. So a Kapahula Avenue, as you know, right now, it's hard to go like before because there's so much traffic going to and from the freeway to Waikiki, et cetera. So there are concerns, any other projects you know that might happen in Kapahulu? Thank you.
Okay, so Chair, may I ask the the board member more some questions? Because I didn't catch the the address of the first one, Kapahulu and what?
Oh, um I'm not a board member, I'm a member of the public.
It was uh Kapahulu, it, yeah, Kapahulu and Winem.
A question Safeway, that new building complex is a commercial with that Shea Ice and other, I'm not sure what the other company was, but um the other one is on Charles Street, right behind Leonard's Bakery. At one time, that um landowner came to the board to say that they wanted to take down four old homes and make a commercial um building in that um lot. It's already been started, but question is, are there any more happening within Kapahula Avenue side or in the area? Because we don't want to be like we're eating with a forty-three story tall complex that doesn't really reflect the um general character of the community. So I don't know if you know of any other projects.
Chair, may I respond to that?
Uh yes.
Okay, so I uh personally, I don't know of any. Although I'm the deputy director, I I I'm not aware of all the different projects going on um on the island. But I can have our staff check. And on my, although you mentioned the two commercial developments on uh Kapahulu and Winem and then on Charles Street that are ongoing, um I sense your concern is about high-rise construction or developments planned along Kapahulu. So I can have our staff check uh about the any high-rise developments or uh large-scale structures that may add additional traffic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any more members of the public online? Seeing none, board members online, Linda?
Uh yeah, I think uh I don't think we have quorum here.
Uh the neighborhood assistant is uh saying that we do with eleven right now.
Eleven board members? I only count seven on my screen. Am I doing something wrong?
He's doing a recount right now and it looks like ten.
How do I make my screen so I can see everyone? I've got it on um uh the big, you know, the squares layout here. I've got it on grid. So and it's on show all names.
Okay, well, um the neighborhood assistant will let us know as quorum goes, if we lose anyone or gain anyone.
I've been calling them, I've been counting them all night and the most I've ever gotten up to is seven.
I think Bert's on, but you don't see him.
I counted Bert, I counted Bert. I counted me, the Chair.
We move on.
Huh? Bert, John, Margaret, uh Michelle.
Linda, we're we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Okay.
Who else do I see? Board members, Margaret?
Yeah, I think yesterday I was there, listening online, and the city council yesterday voted to approve the removal of some of the permits required for some basic items. I don't know whether you were aware of that. Um I think Amanda might have been, sorry, I've got landscapers outside. But um they, you know, for any replacements, nothing structural or in the setback areas. But it was, it's gonna make it really a lot easier for people to move forward. And um there are um do they ever go back and review some of the monster homes that were built with, you know, that are obvious? I mean, we see them every day come up on the MLS. You know, and obviously, if they've built in twenty-three or remodeled, you can tell that they, I mean, it's not that they're not attractive, but they've obviously been built in a hurry or remodeled in a hurry and they don't have permits. Um do you guys go back and check check those, like some of them that were reviewed by the people that got into trouble?
Uh so um Margaret, yes, we do. And I encourage anyone or all board members and the public, if you see a house, it doesn't have to be a ma- a large house or a monster house, but if there, if you think that they don't have a permit, you just give us a call at DPP and we have a whole bunch of inspectors that go out and check on those. If they have a permit, no problem, right? But if they don't have a permit, then we we issue a notice of violation and we uh they issue a stop work order. Now, your question, actually, there were several questions in your comments. Um Bill fifty-six, which was heard yesterday, is a bill that identifies exceptions or exemptions to the building code when a permit is needed. So all jurisdictions, I I would say everyone in the United States, so most, if not all of them, have this special clause within their building code that allows for exemptions because mainly it's about small uh work items that people want to do around their house or business or property that uh it it's just more economical and practical not to regulate every single type of work. So for example, what was approved yesterday was an increase of the what's called the handyman allowance or flexibility that previously it was uh five thousand dollars. Now it's adjusting it for inflation and the cost of construction. It goes up to ten thousand dollars. So if you have work that you need done around your house or at the at your place of business and uh a handyman can do it, although we
What about electric? Sorry, what about plumbing and electric? Do you still need a permit for that?
I'm getting to that, Margaret.
Okay, sorry.
So so if you have a repairs or remodeling that you want to do, you know, you can go up to ten thousand dollars in that type of work. Uh plumbing and electrical work, uh we highly recommend, and it is actually in the ordinance, that you use a licensed contractor. Both the plumbing and electrical exemptions are up to two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh so that accounts for the cost of a licensed contractor, uh which has gone up since the previous uh limit that was allowed. So, yes, it's two thousand five hundred dollars for plumbing and then two thousand five hundred dollars for electrical work. So both, these three are the main ones. I think there's also like fence, six foot high fences. Uh you don't need to have a permit for a fence. So it's it's about the we are all about public safety and health and and but we're also trying to be practical so that if if homeowners and property owners want to do this small projects that don't pose a hazard, you know, like it's not gonna fall down and s- crash on somebody's head or blow off in a hurricane or catch on fire and explode, you you know, they're low-risk type work, just because of the dollar value.
Pardon me, sorry, they did say that the solar permits were holding things up. What's going on with that, anything? The applications for solar permits were the biggest.
Okay, so solar permits, right? Okay, we get about seventeen thousand
Right.
permits a year and about sixty percent of those permits are related to solar permitting. So um we are, we actually have a solar PV task force uh that meets uh once a mon- uh once a month. And we're streaming, streamlining those permits. So uh we are speeding that up and also allowing a greater flexibility on uh in in fact, that Bill fifty-six allowed for the replacement of solar equipment like the panels and the inverter without having to come in for a permit uh as long as you don't exceed the original energy output. So we're doing a lot, I think, on the solar front and we continue to streamline that process.
Kudos to you for raising the limit on, because the general contractors did not want to do any of the work at that, you know, at that low amount. So it's good that you raised it to ten thousand dollars for a handyman because it's hard to find a handyman.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, um if there are no other uh questions or comments or concerns uh for Deputy Director Sumata, um I've been seeing none uh or, oh, I see one more from Linda again.
Yeah, I was wondering about uh, I I count only twenty people at the meeting. Is that what the clerk has? I mean, we're not supposed to, we're supposed to have a quorum, aren't we?
Hi Linda, uh Neighborhood Assistant Dylan here. Um so we have twenty-five people virtual, we have four board members in person. Of those twenty-five virtual, I just did a double check, we have ten board members present. Uh Mr. Persons was present earlier in the meeting and that's why I had eleven, but I do not see his phone number listed anymore. But we do have quorum, we're good to go. If we take votes, I'm gonna ask everyone to turn on their cameras because we need at least eight people visible for quorum.
Right, and I I I don't even see any blackout, um you know, people that just don't have their picture here. Usually you see that, right?
We'll we'll make sure it's right when it comes time to any important decisions.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you have something?
Yes, I I do. I would like to ask the DPP Deputy Director how DPP feels about all of these development exemptions that violate the city zoning regulations for these high rises that are on the edge of our uh board district.
Okay, um Michelle, I'm not too sure if I fully understand your question.
All right.
I I don't think I'm an expert on it on that, but I can certainly take it back to the staff.
Yes, please, it's a very important issue to us. We've had a resolution a- adopted unanimously to protect our community uh from development that has an untold number of exemptions for a whole list, a litany of things. And an example of that is the Kualae Tower on Kapialani Boulevard, which was slipped through the city council very quickly. And I know that uh the director could not speak on it very openly uh because her comments were very brief. Uh we were watching very closely to see what would happen. The fact that the uh jurisdictional neighborhood board had a unanimous resolution in opposition to this development was not even brought forth at the city council committee hearing or the full council meeting.
Well, I, you know what, Michelle, how about, oh, no, sorry, Chair, can I uh request that
Yes.
the resolution that um Michelle is talking about? If I can get a copy of that, then I can uh respond to that. That probably has a lot, a lot of details that our staff would better understand than me.
I I would hope you have, the DPP would have received it by now. It was up to our Chair and Neighborhood Assistant uh to get it to, and it is posted online under our website uh resolutions. But I would be happy to send it to if uh you don't receive it from the Chair.
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, and the Neighborhood Assistant can work with you on that and follow up on that.
Okay, so Chair, I just loaded my email address. And if maybe Dylan can send me that resol, then we can make a comment.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions for Deputy Director Sumata, then thank you very much for your time tonight.
Chair, can I, can I check out and Dylan, if you can take notes, if there's any other city stuff that comes up?
Sure thing. Dylan will take care of that for you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. All right, up next Honolulu Board of Water Supply.
Thank you, Chair, and board members and community members. Kathleen Pahinui here for the Board of Water Supply. Just wanted to alert everybody you should have received in your mail of just in the past couple of weeks, our water quality report. This is for your water quality for 2022. It's always a year behind. So if you have any questions regarding your report, please contact us at 808-748-5041. I am pleased to report we had no May breaks in your community over this past month. And I did want to give a quick update on the fencing on Diamond Head. We had the bid opened, occurred on May 26th. We are currently reviewing the bids and may be awarding the project in the very near future, subject to the manager's approval. Construction will commence once the contract is processed, executed, and all permits and approvals are obtained by the contractor. I will continue to follow this project and provide regular reports to this board. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Anyone from the public have questions for BWS? Seeing none, board members here, Arlene.
Hi Kathleen, this is Arlene.
Hi, Arlene.
Hi, I was, I've been following the Red Hill situation and I was just wondering if you have any updates for us on what the Navy is doing. And, you know, I saw in the paper that they are planning to take away their pipes. But I also saw that your, the board is also concerned about the, still the ramifications of all the toxins that have been spilled already.
Yeah, I'm pleased to report, I'd like to think that the efforts of the community and our agency have made an impact because they seem to be moving more in the direction that we wanted them to, which is dismantling of the facility. As you know, they did a survey recently through Nakapuna on reuse of the facility, but now it seems that they're walking away from that and we're very, we're very happy. We do not want to see that facility reused in any size, shape, or form. It's, as you pointed out early, there is a lot of remediation. That facility has leaks going back to the early 40s and a lot of environmental work will need to be done. Admiral Wade is stating that about 100,000 to 400,000 gallons of what they call sludge will be left in the pipes that they need to take out because it's heavy enough that gravity will not allow it to flow downhill to toward the harbor. We will continue working and pressing them to move that along as expeditionally and safely as possible. Ernie has had several meetings with the Navy in the past few weeks. As you know, the Field Tank Advisory Committee met this week on Tuesday. That's facilitated by the Department of Health. And we have a meeting coming up with the three admirals Barnett, Killian, and Wade next Friday, I believe. So we maintain our relationship talking with them and I hope that what we're telling them is making an impact. But we are not going to ease up and we ask, respectfully ask the community to do the same, is to stay on top of them.
Any other questions from board members here? Seeing none, oh, Arlene again?
One more quick question. Is there still a request to keep our conservation of water to
Yeah, well, we're, yeah, Arlene, we're heading into the summer months and unfortunately usage is rising, which is typical in the summer months, but we are asking everybody, please just be as conscientious as you have to. If you feel the need to water your lawn, please do it before 9:00 AM or after 5:00 PM and do it as limited as humanly possible. The good news is we had a good winter, a good wet winter. We had three to four good months of rain and that helps us a great deal. But we're going to continue, as you know, our halava is still down as is IA on our halava wells. So we're still monitoring the situation very closely. We meet weekly on exploratory and monitoring wells that we're working to get done.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the public online? Seeing none, board members online, Michelle?
Thank you, Chair. Aloha Kathleen.
Aloha, Michelle.
Great to see you again. Just a quick question on the water quality report. Has there been any indication of the toxins migrating to the side of the island? To our board district, over to Waikiki, we've heard some rumors?
Oh, those are rumors.
Okay.
It would be, it would, it would have to be a very catastrophic spill for that. The 20,000 gallons is more or less stayed within that general area. However, we're still monitoring, we still test weekly to look for anything where we will not let up on that until we can be reassured that they're not migrating. According to DOH, they think the plume is receding, but of course the monitoring wells are only as good as where you have monitoring wells. And the monitoring wells are only in the vicinity of Red Hill. So we will continue, but we have not detected any of those petrochemicals in any of our wells and definitely not heading in this direction.
Thank you so much. Good news.
All right, Margaret?
Hi, I put it in the chat, but did you, did you folks give final approval to the Kool-Aid project? I know that there was, you haven't.
We don't give approval per se. All we do, Margaret, is we, people will come and say, we are going to be building this project. And we say, thank you for notifying us, but come back to us when you get your building permits and we'll let you know if there's going to be enough water. That's how we operate. So if they've sent us a letter, they've got their building permits and we've looked at our water system, all we can do is say whether or not there is enough water for the project or, or not. We have out in other parts of the islands have said, and we did this in Waikiki as well for a while. We said you couldn't build anything because there were limitations on the system that we fixed. And once they were fixed, we could say, okay, you, you can now have your permit. However, what we do do and what we have done with Kobayashi Group is we have put in some conditions for conservation. Kobayashi Group is doing gray water recycling for the project. They, we have told them no water features. We have said you need to do zero scaping type plantings and things like that. So we have worked with them to say, okay, these are things you must do. And we, we do that as a matter of practice for almost all projects, big projects. Usually single family homes, not so much. But yeah, we have worked with them, we are talking to them and they have let us know what conservation messages they are, measures they are putting in. The only one that can stop a building, I'm sorry, Jero, if you're still here, is DPP.
Had they approved? Because I, I wasn't sure.
I have no idea. I haven't followed it that closely. You would, I would say
You folks have.
Council members or again with our DPP.
Yeah. Well, I know in Phoenix too, you know, they stopped all development because of the water and it, we might have to do that.
And we, we have talked to people about that. We, we do not want to put a moratorium out there. But if we find that we are not able to get good conservation and things, we've done it before. We did it back in the 90s where people weren't allowed to water their lawns on certain days of the week. So we, if, if we need to do it, we, we will work with our board. Our board is the final say on any moratorium, but we have a water shortage plan in place. You can find it on our website and I'll be happy to send a link to the Chair to share with all of you. But our water shortage plan was approved by our board several months ago. And that gives us guidelines on when we are pull triggers on certain things. And then our Board of Directors has the final say on whether or not we go into a moratorium. So it's a very thought out process because the last thing we want to do is scare people. But we, we do need to have a process in place, which we do.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Seeing no other hands at the moment. Thank you Kathleen.
Thank you. Aloha.
Up next, Kapilani Community College.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, members of the board. This is Carol Hushko. I apologize, I might be sounding a little raspy. I've been under the weather for the past few days. I did want to let you know a couple of things. One is that for the Culinary Institute of the Pacific, there is a position description that is currently being advertised for the CIP Director. It is on the UH site where job announcements are. And I think it's going to be up there for another two weeks or so. I think it's been up for one week. So we are searching for the Director for the new culinary facility. Secondly, I, I know that we had a request that perhaps we show the full Culinary Institute PowerPoint at one of your board meetings. And so I am here today to ask if perhaps we might be able to show that at your July meeting. And if we could possibly do it as the first presentation of the presentations because of the availability of the people who will be able to talk. And is that going to be possible? I mean, I can let you know, confirm with you, but I did want to make that request.
Yeah, there will be just a few setup things that will take place during that meeting for the initial convening. But yeah, you can, we can have you, we can work to accommodate your availability.
Okay, they, they will most likely, you know, do, just need to do a screen share from wherever it is that they are.
Okay.
Okay, and then let me see, I, you know, I didn't get any slides from them. So I put a couple of slides together myself that I can show just some of the progress recently, if I can do a share screen.
Sure.
Can, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this is probably a little progress since you last saw some slides that I showed. This, this is a view of the restaurant from the side where people would enter. And that, the roof is slanting upward and the view that you will have from the restaurant will be toward Waikiki and downtown and the ocean. And I believe that that pork crusher that used to be at the old Cannon Club is about where this one, the entry is going to be for this restaurant. This second slide here shows the back of the auditorium. Due to some redesign and so forth and cost saving measures, we connected the auditorium with the restaurant. And so the lower part that you see to the left is the auditorium. And in that auditorium, there will be room for wine tasting. There are little sinks in there and then when it's not being used for wine tasting, the covers will be over the spaces and people will be able to sit there and listen to lectures and so forth. And that facility will have the capability of recording demonstrations and broadcasting them. This, this bottom slide is where they are building the new innovation lab. And those of you who are familiar with the current site, this facility is right next door, Cocoa Head side. This will be the innovation lab and then next to it, to the right is where we have our current laboratories where we do eastern and western cooking. And that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none here, board members here? Seeing none.
I have a question. I raise my hand.
Yes, we're moving to the online side now. Members from the public online, Daisy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi Carol. Question, what about the next town hall meeting for CIP 2? Isn't it in July?
Oh, oh, yes. Daisy, the, excuse me, the, the next town hall meeting is going to be the first Thursday in July at its regular time.
Five to six, yeah?
Five to six o'clock, yes. And then additionally, we want to do the full presentation for the board because we know that everyone doesn't make it to that virtual town hall.
Thank you.
Okay, board members online, Linda?
Thank you. Carol, I'm so sorry you're so sick. Yeah, kudos to you for coming. Everybody in the community is asking me, when they'll be able to come and eat something? And could you have any kind of ballpark date to give them, months or whatever?
Yeah, actually the facility is supposed to be finished at the end of this calendar year. And the key, of course, the keys would be turned over around and, but we still have to put smallwares and other types of equipment in there. So I don't think, it'd probably be more like summer or fall before, you know, it's actually open for business and for classes.
Of this year or '24?
'24, yeah. But, you know, we are currently off, we do offer classes up there right now in the building that does exist.
Don't I remember seeing a kitchen in there? It seemed like a fully built out kitchen.
Yes, in the, in the building that exists, we have a western and we have an Asian cooking, cooking labs, two labs. And there are lockers and there's an office up there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle?
Hi Carol, just briefly. The hours, any of the hours been determined for the restaurant facility?
There, I believe that they're hoping to have times open so that, you know, people could go up there for lunch. And then also there are, there's banquet space up there, private banquet space, so that people could have private functions during the day or if they have a meeting function that they want to hold there and then on into the night. Maybe it's around, we don't want to keep it open too late because of the neighborhood. So maybe 10 o'clock or so. But, you know, don't quote beyond that. I can give you the exact hours.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other hands. Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Up next, Governor's Representative?
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Aloha, everyone. I will keep this brief because I know we've still got a packed agenda and Thank you. Aloha, everyone. Uh, I will keep this brief because I know we've still got a packed agenda and so I don't want to repeat anything that's not being discussed. Um, just a couple of reminders, of course, just to reiterate what HPD was talking about in terms of two weeks' wedding for her famous fairness. Um, that is something that we're really trying to stress statewide, is, you know, they sent out the advisory today that El Manu is back. And so that's always a bad thing. Simple statistics, that is just an increase in storms in the area. So definitely something to keep an eye on and be aware. Um, this is also June fifth through June eleventh is Medicare fraud prevention week. And in twenty twenty-one, an estimated seventeen million dollars was reportedly lost to online Medicare scams in New York. That's seventeen million dollars that can have lots of different ventures, scammers, plots. So that's something that we always want to make sure that we are reminding people of. And it is devastating. Uh, Senior Medicare Patrol Hawaii is part of a national network and is part of um, state partner of help. And they teach individuals how to protect identities, assets, and legacy. And so if that is something that you are interested in, they are going to be doing some work this uh, week and this coming month to help individuals with questions, concerns, or complaints about suspicious activity. And if you would like a, a copy of our Hawaii Fraud Prevention and Resource Guide, please visit www.snwhawaii.org for more. And that also brings to mind Medicaid, which of course is a different one. Um, however, it may not be well-known that um, about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand of our state residents are currently on Medicaid. And during the pandemic, that was something that renewed automatically. And typically, it's something that has to be renewed. Now that the pandemic is over, they are now going through and going back to the old way of re-authenticating participation. That started in March, it will continue to be the next year, the re-authenticating participation. So, or you know, the re-authenticating the old way, it just won't be automatic renewal. So that's something that we really want to make people aware of, that that's going to be happening. And of course, so many people are hearing stories of scams. And this is where I'm going to say, if somebody reaches out to somebody to um, try to re-authenticate their Medicaid participation, that is something that should be followed up on. Typically use, you know, good cyber hygiene techniques to do that, but do know that there are efforts underway to re-authenticate and will be continuing for the next twenty-four months, or twelve as we go through that process. And um, you know, that note I made about the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand residents, I believe it's one in three are not almost a half. So that is something that definitely affects a lot of people. So we just want to make sure that that's out there and that the authentication process is going on. And so we don't want anybody to who should be on that program, we don't want inadvertently not eligible if we don't. Happy to answer your question.
All right, thank you. Um, members of the public. Seeing none, board members here in person. Seeing none, uh, members of the public online, Daisy.
Thank you. Um, hi, I have a question. Um, New York City just started a vending machine that um, you can get your Narcan spray. And I couldn't believe they even have fentanyl and um, a clean pipe in case the drug users want to use a better pipe. But the question is, is the governor thinking of getting more of the Narcan available to other places that people can pick up? Because it seems to be um, helping people. So I'm not sure if there are other venues that the governor can think of of statewide to get Narcan more accessible to people.
I will take that back and get an answer.
Okay, um, any more members of the public online? Seeing none, board members online. Seeing none, thank you. All right, up next, presentations, American Heart Association, twenty twenty-three Hawaii Heart Walk. Is there anyone um, attending online tonight for the American Heart Association twenty twenty-three Hawaii Heart Walk?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have my um, team member Kelly. I think she's just trying to figure out her audio.
Can you hear me on that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. I was calling in and it wasn't working. So, thank you for having us tonight. Um, my name's Kelly Cruz. I'm from the American Heart Association Hawaii. And we're here to share about our upcoming event happening on August fifth. We're going to be hosting the Hawaii Heart Walk. Heart Walk is a community event. It's open to the public and free to come out and join. We're anticipating hopefully three thousand walkers joining us on Saturday morning, August fifth, at Kapuaulani Park. We currently have sixty-four companies signed up to join as well as community members. Um, the purpose of Heart Walk is to raise life-saving funds, but to really recognize and celebrate survivors of heart disease and stroke, to celebrate the advancements made possible through the support of our community members and to help further the American Heart Association's mission of being a relentless force for longer healthier lives. We're really grateful to be back in person after a hiatus with COVID and grateful to the Diamond Head Neighborhood Association for allowing us space to host our event. We'd love to invite all of you to come out and join us. We're going to pop the link into the chat um, for the walk. If you guys are interested in registering and learning more information, we'll have that on our website. Um, and I also have my colleague Alisa here with us, who's going to share a little bit about what the walk route is going to look like this year.
Awesome. Thank you Kelly. Um, yeah, so for the walk, again, it's going to be on August fifth on a Saturday. We will be having two different routes. Um, like last year, we had um, the walk, uh, one-mile walk that was going around just Kapuaulani Park. Um, and then we will have an additional route, um, that will be about four and a half miles going all around um, Diamond Head and back to um, the park. But yeah, that's pretty much it. Um, yeah, I hope we can um, see any of you joining us for this wonderful event. And thank you so much for having us on here tonight.
All right, great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the public in person? Seeing none, anything from board members in person? Seeing none, anyone from the public online? Seeing none, board members online? Seeing none. Well, I just want to say thank you um, for coming out tonight and informing us. And um, as they noted, uh, there is a link in the chat on how to um, go to the website. And I was wondering if, could you just um, read out uh, I guess the link, um, the URL to where if anyone here uh, wants to write it down right now?
Yeah, it is www.hiheartwalk.org.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we are now at item six on the agenda, Board Business for Discussion and Action. Uh, we have item A, Resolution Relating to Changing the Name of Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board Number Five to Leahi, Kapahulu, Kalai Pohaku Neighborhood Board Number Five. Um, I am going to uh, open this up if there is anyone from the public who wants to comment on this. And uh, I will then, if I could have assistance, I don't see um, Vice Chair Winston Welch online. Uh, no, he is not online, so I will. Okay, um, so I'm going to take uh, public concerns first, just initially on this. And then when it comes time, I am going to uh, pass the metaphorical gavel to uh, Mr. David Boidel. Um, but Laura, Ruby?
Yes, um, thank you. I'm going to screen share for a moment. Um, just a second. Um, this is a map from um, eighteen, it's a combined map from eighteen eighty-one and eighteen eighty-three. And if you can see my cursor, uh, on the right side, it's sort of a gold-colored thing, that is um, Kalai Pohaku. Uh, it is roughly speaking in sort of the city mill area now. I think you're probably not uh, designating the area that would be somewhat agriculture and not actually houses in the, in the um, past. Um, it's going to be problematical that you're going to choose that name to stand in for St. Louis Heights. Um, the other thing is um, that um, Diamond Head has been Diamond Head since the um, English-speaking sailors came with the, discovering the Mica in the, on the, on Diamond Head. And that's how it got its name. It became, let's say, Hawaiianized, becoming uh, Kaimana Hila uh, for a long period of time. And that's why you can see Kaimana Beach, you know, et cetera, that way. Uh, it's also, um, I think the primary thing is that um, you cannot um, uh, expect that the tourists will understand Leahi. Uh, you can have uh, joint signs which have both on them Diamond Head and Leahi. Uh, I've seen that done in Montreal where they have both the English and the French uh, simultaneously on street signs and any kind of announcing signs that will cost quite a bit of money. But I don't think you're going to convince the public that they should go around calling it Leahi. Um, it's just Diamond Head has sort of been fixed in the um, in the history. So uh, I'll welcome any questions that people have as to why the namings are not particularly good. Kapahulu is fine. But um, the names are not particularly fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I am going to pass the gavel to um, Secretary Boidel, if he doesn't mind.
Okay, please go ahead, Chair Witzel.
Okay, so I wanted to comment on this because it was actually myself who proposed this resolution. Um, I did speak with several people, including uh, some native Hawaiian members of this island. And um, in thinking about this resolution, I was really thinking about what I wanted to say tonight. I was more interested in uh, listening to some of the other comments and uh, maybe suggestions or input on this topic. I think I've seen a comment now from uh, Board Member Merchi and, and I've seen or heard the testimony from uh, Ms. Laura Ruby. I think just my perspective on that is tourists might not know the name Leahi. But they also, the first thing they do when they get here is they learn aloha and mahalo. And the reason they learn that is because we use that. If we do not use Leahi, we cannot ever expect tourists to know the historical names of sites and places. So if we do not even use it ourselves, we cannot ever expect anyone to also use it. And so that's why I think it's important that we take a look at these types of things and we actually consider using the historical names as close as we can. I understand that there are not always going to be exact lineups with historical ahuhwas. But you know, in terms of the intent and purpose, I think it's important that we do acknowledge the original historical names of these places. And we can do so without you know, I, I basically, I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I think it's like, sort of a half-measure to say, let's, you know, call it Diamond Head slash Leahi. I just don't understand why we couldn't call it the original name. And if you can say aloha and you can say mahalo, then you can say Leahi.
Thank you, Chair Witzel. Um, can I return the gavel to you?
Um, if you could, if you could just run this section.
All right, um, so I don't see anyone from the public uh, online, but uh, Linda Wong has her hand raised?
Yes, thank you.
Mahalo.
Um, I would like to request the people putting in resolutions include their name with the resolution. So we know where it comes from, because the resolutions are coming before we even hear anything about the subject matter. Um, I presently have three people here visiting me from San Francisco. Now, they've got even the shaka sign, they have the wrong shaka, you know, the shaka sign, they have this or something. So it's hard for them to learn all this stuff. It was hard for me to learn when I first came here fifty years ago. So I, I started learning by the um, street signs. And uh, you know, learning about the Hawaiian language and all that stuff. And when I do talk to people from here, I can call them out in Leahi. They, when I know it's somebody that knows what I'm talking about, then I use it. So that seems to be the easiest way to me. Um, the city is better now about putting directional signs on the highway, uh, the way to the airport, the way to, you know, before there was none. And if you weren't from here and you're driving, you're out of luck. So um, I, I just would like to uh, mention those two facts that uh, it, it just, I think needed to have a, a bigger appeal, I think, than from, well, anyway, that's my true sense. Uh, I do feel that way. Mahalo.
Thank you, Linda. Um, uh, is there any more, is there any comment from the public in person or online or? And seeing?
Yes, um, I'll, I'll, I'll help you out on this end, David. Um, there is a member of the public here.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
I'm a tall person. Hi. Um, I was going to say that I really appreciated the impact of it. Um, and I do think it was something to consider. And I think also a reason for the question of, we really were. And whenever it comes, there are a lot of discussion today, I think about the terrorists. But we have a neighborhood board, we all discuss around the community. Um, and so I guess also with that, I'd hope I wouldn't stop at the same. And as we were talking earlier, or you guys were talking earlier about having Diamond Head and Hawaii. It falls out in a lot of discussions and stuff. So I have a question, it's a comment, but I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, and uh, Margaret, Merchi, you had a comment?
Yeah. I didn't hear what she was saying. I didn't, we're having a hard time hearing uh, the audio from the room. I, I think that we've got a really uh, good identity here. The locals don't even know Leahi. Leahi, Matt Catamaran had changed their name. Um, I understand that, you know, the identity and the history. But maybe we could put, you know, put a second heading under the Diamond Head. But I don't even, I can't even pronounce the St. Louis part of it. So I think that if, I think we need to keep Diamond Head, people know it, they know, you know, we've done good work. And it's, you know, I, I don't understand where this is coming from. And I think at the very least, we should defer it and discuss it, not just put it out there.
We are discussing it.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, I'd like to read a comment from the chat uh, from Representative Burke Kobayashi uh, for my email to the Neighborhood Board today. State House has changed district place descriptions to Hawaiian names whenever possible. Hence, Leahi is now used to describe my district, not Diamond Head. Um, so that was his comment uh, in the chat. And uh, Michelle Matson, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I, I
Yes, I do. I, I appreciate Dylan Whittso's commitment and work on this. I believe the resolution has been well-written and somewhat well-researched. I have a question as to which native Hawaiians he consulted, which cultural experts he consulted on arbitrarily changing a name without the full cultural Hawaiian input on this. I have spoken with two cultural consultants today because of my own curiosity. I do, I feel this needs to be a win-win and highly respectful, and I believe that's the intent. However, changing our neighborhood board as a neighborhood board, what is the Hawaiian name for neighborhood board? And how, what is the consistency with the, the original land divisions? There are lots of questions from Native Hawaiian cultural interests about why this is happening on this level and not on the larger level. And for a more widespread public discussion. We do know that the House introduced a bill this year to change the names, specifically the name of Diamond Head on any monument, landmark, or park, which would include Diamond Head State Monument with enormous historical and preservation documentation from the state all the way to the, to, to the federal government. Diamond Head State Monument, the Diamond Head National Natural Landmark, which was designated by the Interior of, the Secretary of the Interior of the United States. And then, of course, many, many documents that even, we have a committee, a DLNR, the Diamond Head Citizens Advisory Committee. There's the Diamond Head State Monument Foundation. So this is a much wider spectrum than just a neighborhood board. What we have right now is, I guess, that was, it was Representative Kobayashi brought up this bill or this resolution. And what happened with the bill was it was not heard by the House, so it did not go on to the Senate. Then the makers of the bill wrote a resolution with the same intent for, to change Diamond Head Monument Park Landmark to Leahi. And that was heard in the House. It was a concurrent resolution and a House resolution. The concurrent resolution and the House resolution passed the House. But the Senate did not hear the concurrent resolution, so it was not equally supported. The House resolution is an advisory to DLNR and the city. And perhaps this is where this idea came from, by the maker of this resolution before the board. Perhaps it was a takeoff of what the House was recommending to the city and DLNR. We know that Neighborhood Commission is part of the city and the chair has another venue at that commission. So we don't really know how this evolved, but I do respect the effort. I do respect the research and the writing. All we need is more Hawaiian cultural verification and support to be able to know we're doing the right thing here in the cultural sense. The other idea that has been brought forth, and this was Laura Ruby, it might be a win-win to have the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board as is and the triple Hawaiian names with Neighborhood Board in Hawaiian underneath. Some Hawaiian agencies do this on their agendas. I believe there may be some legislative committees that do as well. So that seems to be a more reasonable approach under the circumstances so as not to create a controversy or a dilemma or confusion. That's just a suggestion I'm putting out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Matson. And Laura Ruby, you have your hand up again?
Yes, just to add a few more things to the conversation. Think of how many, and probably hundreds, if not thousands, of movies and books have all been, have all used Diamond Head. And Diamond Head becomes the instant reference for Hawaii, no matter what else people know about Hawaii. That's one of, one of the items. Second of all, Diamond Head Road and probably there may be other things. You will not be able to change the name of the road because it has addresses on it. I, just to fill you in, I went to the naming commission, the state naming commission, to get the Alanaio, which was formerly called the Houston Ditch on the record. Now, it has no street addresses on it, and it was certainly not a good name at all. Mr. Houston was not a good person and the ditch is not a friendly name. So Alanaio is now the official name. But all of the changes have to go through the, this commission. And I think it's going to be rather difficult, especially Diamond Head Road is going to stay Diamond Head Road because of the, the street addresses that are there. So I think you'll have to, have to rethink some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Ruby. And I see Chair Whitson's hand.
Yes, I was just going to ask Board Member Matson, just really quickly. What is the name of the, the road that this board was arguing about over reinstating the parking all last year? Remember the public, it's called Leahi?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it was, yeah, it was called, it was called Leahi.
There's Leahi Avenue, which people, where people have the addresses.
Board Member Matson, do you, do you know what the English, I guess, name of Leahi is?
Yes, it's the brow of the tuna.
No, the, no, like the name.
Leahi.
Yes, what does Leahi?
It translates to the brow of the tuna.
Yes, and so, but you know what Leahi is.
As Laura explained, was how the, the ship, the sailors on the ships interpreted Diamond Head when they first saw it and the mica on the slopes that they thought were diamonds, obviously not.
You do know that it was originally called Leahi?
Oh, you don't have to interrogate me because I don't know.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
About, I do know about Leahi very well. Okay, so what is your next question?
That was it, that was it. I was, I was confused because we keep saying, we're, I've seen other comments as well that we're losing our identity or whatever. I just wonder how the people felt when they referred to it as Leahi and then other people started calling it Diamond Head.
It's a conflation, if I can say it. La means headland or, or promontory and Ahi is the tuna. Now you, that's why Kalai Pohaku is the headland of rockiness. You have, but what happens is there's conflation in a lot of Hawaiian words. Thank you.
So we are now seeming to all be experts on what Leahi means. And everyone here seems to know exactly what we are referencing when we are talking about it. And I don't think that the naming of this board extends to all of a sudden, now we're talking about renaming Diamond Head Road or anything like that. We are literally just talking about this board. And I think that if there ever was any interest in maybe at some point requesting the state to change Diamond Head State Monument to Leahi or something like that, that's not what this is about at the moment. You know, this is a neighborhood board made up of community members. Everyone here knows what Leahi is. And so the intent of this was to just take that into consideration.
With all due respect, I do believe we need Hawaiian cultural commentary on this. And I would like to know which cultural experts you consulted, Mr. Whitso.
Did you need a cultural expert to know what Leahi was?
You need the Hawaiian.
That wasn't the question.
Okay.
I guess, I guess there is no name. Thank you.
Yeah, I got my hand up.
Linda Wong?
Thank you. I think there's always been so many bad things happen and bad feelings between the Hawaiians and the locals and the Hawaiis when we don't talk to each other. So if we go make a rule for the Hawaiians without asking them their opinion, what kind of respect is that? And it doesn't, it's just not kosher, you know, it's, people make, cause all this trouble between Hawaiians and locals. And now the locals and the Hawaiians are pitted against each other with Kiwalos, Makai. So, you know, I, I don't want to perpetuate that of changing something for another culture that we haven't asked them how they feel about it. I think that just breeds animosity. Thank you.
Here in person, Julia Allen.
I just have one personal comment to make. One, I happen to really like the name Leahi. I think we do use it, but we use a mixture of names. I recognize that, but I like using Leahi myself as preference. But when it comes to St. Louis Heights, I actually, St. Louis Heights is part of Wa'ahila Bridge. And I tend to associate my community with Wa'ahila, also because of the state park. Though we also use Kalai Pohaku, because we have a park, Kalai Pohaku and Street. So we actually use a mixture. I just personally associate my community with Wa'ahila.
Thank you, Julia Allen. So.
Secretary Boidel, I, I, yeah, I think that, I think the intent was made clear by me, but seems like this board is not ready for this type of stepping up to actually do something right for this board. So, I mean, I would make a motion to defer this until another point. And so I'm, I'm okay with deferring it at this point. And I would just say that I hope that I don't see anyone emailing me with aloha or mahalo if.
Okay, so to, to defer, is there, is there any objection to deferring this resolution? Linda Wong, do you have a objection?
Oh, no, I'm, no, I don't. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll second.
All right, so if there's, I don't know, we need a vote on this. If there's no objection, then is this a, is this a vote to, to?
Yeah, we're, we're just deferring it.
Just deferring it. All right. And, and I hand the gavel back to Chair Whitso. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so we didn't hear any, any yes, no, or abstain to deferring, so we will defer this to some other time. The next item of business is a resolution requesting the Honolulu City Council to conduct a public hearing and vote on Resolution twenty-three dash eighty-two relating to council pay raises. This was an item that was requested to me by several neighborhood board chairs. I'm not entirely sure of the timeline of this because I do know that there was a city council meeting yesterday and maybe Council Chair Waters might have an update for us on the results of that. But either way, depending on how the timeline is explained to us, I do think that it would still be an opportunity for this board to be able to, and the community here to be able to potentially express their opinions. So Council Chair, if you wouldn't mind briefly just giving us an update on this issue.
Aloha, Chair Whitso. And mahalo for having me here and explaining it. So we had a full-blown hearing last night that lasted thirteen hours. We started at eight-thirty in the morning and we ended about nine-thirty last night. The debate, big debate, was whether or not we included the money in the budget, in the legislative budget. And it is not in the legislative budget. At this point, as the chair, you know, few members have asked to pull it out of my committee and put it onto the floor. I did not do that on June seventh. It was not debated specifically. It's Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-one and Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-three. It was not debated. And there were not the votes to pull it off my desk to put it onto the floor. But I would like to talk about a subsequent thing. The entire process, I think, what we gleaned from this thirteen-hour meeting with a lot of very angry people, the process itself needs to be changed. Right? What was talked about was the fact that the salary commission is appointed by the council and the mayor. And then they decide on what the salary should be. They have public hearings and then make a recommendation to the council. And it becomes the law unless rejected by seven members. As you know, there's nine members of the council, they need to be rejected by seven members. The fact of the matter is Jan Yamato from the Executive Director of the Ethics Commission came and testified. And I asked her specifically, I said, is it a conflict of interest for council members to vote on the, on anything that is financially themed from? And of course, she refused. The salary is going to go up by sixty-four percent. So if you put council members in that spot, it's very awkward, right? Because it is a conflict of interest. I will tell you though, that the Executive Director ultimately ruled based on the charter that as long as you disclose that you have a conflict of interest, you're disqualified. Right? But at the same time, what I'm saying is, in what world does anyone get to decide what their raise is? It's really, really awkward, right? The secretary doesn't get to tell her boss how much she gets to get paid or increase her salary, right? The waiter waitress doesn't get to say, hey, you need to give them this thing. That's just not how it works. And it's just so awkward that council members are put in that spot. The other thing that I wanted to point out was that the salary commission, in the findings of fact, that happened to be noted, we both pointed out two things that were, to me, the most interesting that I hadn't known until I saw the findings of fact. But one, in the last thirty-three years, the salaries for the, for the council members have been frozen nineteen out of thirty-three years. What the salary commission is saying is that this is a one-time salary adjustment to make up for the nineteen years that it's frozen. And if you think about it, we're separate but equal branches of government, right? You've got a executive branch, a legislative branch, and the judicial branch. Separate but equal. But yet if you look at the compensation amongst the three branches, the legislative branch is always in my mind and taken for granted, right? Which turns to the debate of whether or not it's full-time or part-time. Everybody was saying it's a great salary for a part-time job. I don't think folks heard last night, Dowd and Otto's speech about the work that we do. Quite honestly, I don't want to really get into that. I will tell you in my presentation, and it's my turn to speak about updating of all the things that we've been working on so we can glean what it is that we do. The second thing that the salary commission and Prime Number, things are inversion. Folks know the inversion here. Inversion is when the salaries are inverted. Basically, every single one of my employees gets more money than me. With the exception of one, but every single one of them. Like more than the employee, not the council member. So they're trying to address that as well with this one time. And it's, anyway, it's a one-time salary adjustment. I don't anticipate this ever going to happen again. I don't anticipate this ever going to happen again. And the second thing I wanted to point out, that in society today, and when it was contemplated that this job was a part-time job, or back in the nineteen fifty, boy, it was a different place at that time. Today, we have over one point one million people here. My district and each council member's district is about one hundred thousand people. And the myriad of problems that we have to deal with is actually very, very serious, very, very important. And how do you attract good candidates to enter this job, right? I want to, I want smart, educated, qualified, experienced people in this job. I'm turned out by the little after this term. We're talking about the next generation. How do you get people who, who have experience to do this? Just like in capitalism, you have to pay them, right? There's a reason why we have three hundred vacancies in the city right now. And it's hard to, to actually get good people to work for you, like you have those gentlemen here, thank you. Um, it's because the pay is so low. We've got three thousand vacancies right now in the city. From BDP, the parks, the design and construction. You wonder why it took so godlong to get that shower at Kaimana Beach. I've been fighting for that for three years. You know why? Because design and construction doesn't have people that work and get the job done. It's because they don't pay this much. You need architects and engineers to do this job. And architects and engineers, they're not going to take this job in the city because they don't have enough. It's a problem across the board, not just in the council. And you know what, guys? I know it sounds horrible, sixty-four percent, oh my gosh. And it is, sixty-four is a huge jump. But ultimately, it's still about two-thirds of what the executive branch is, I think. Or in my mind, people work. So, just to cut the rich here. There's an outside chance that if we get seven members to vote against, uh, the pay increase, that, um, it would happen. But at this point, it's getting to the end. It has to be decided by June twenty-four, I think. June twenty-four. Um. Anyway, that, that's what I had, and I'm open to questions, and I'll be here for the first time present. I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you very much, um, uh, Council Chair. Um, I think it was just important that we, uh, get a little bit of background on, um, where the, the current status is of this. Um, so, is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments or concerns on this topic? Uh, yes.
Can everyone online? Check, check. Can everyone online hear us?
Not very well.
No, we could hardly see, hear anything. It was muffled and staticky. I, I couldn't, I couldn't understand half of it.
I think we can now.
Just one more time.
There must be a loose wire in the system.
We're using wireless mics, so wouldn't be a loose wire, but it could be internal. Secretary Boedel?
Down on that mic is very low compared to on the chair's mic.
Let's try this one. Is this any better?
Not really.
Is this okay, Sec? Check, check.
That sounds, that sounds good, I thought.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you, Council President, for being here. I just would like to say, I think that Council President Waters kind of addressed the comments that I would make, which is, we do understand, and most of the public understands, that it seems like a gross conflict of interest. And everywhere you turn, every day, you're seeing hotels and the city, and nobody can get workers. All the hospitals came out the other day, we can't get workers. Nobody wants to work for the wages that are there. And the council and the commission did say that they deserve a raise. Everyone's not saying they don't deserve a raise. I think the question is, it just doesn't look good. You go around and talk to people in the neighborhood. I talked to a lot of people in the condos and poolay. We talked to the garden, and the idea of a sixty-four percent raise, when you've got workers every day. I drove today by the gas company. They're on strike. They're asking to hawk for the. People are lucky to get a five percent raise, a ten percent raise if you're lucky, a two percent raise. So, I think it's just, it doesn't look good. You know, we talk about attracting good people. We have some good people. You guys all campaigned for the job knowing you weren't going to make this kind of money. Um, so I, I'm just saying that I just think that, in fact, I just wanted to leave one comment. I was shocked because I almost never agree with the editorials that this advertiser puts out. But they actually, they actually ended their editorial and said, until there is a correction to the way the council raises are granted, this mammoth one on the table should go back on the shelf. I will just say that. I don't know if that's possible, but I think that the council make these raises are going to have a lo- hard time gaining back a lot of trust from the public. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here in the public who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, um, uh, so I will go to online, and I see Daisy.
Thanks, Chair. Um, Council Member Chair Waters, where is the money coming from? On top of that, the commission director or chair, Rebecca Soon happens to be the daughter of former Big Shot Director Cheryl and her husband Soon of the city. So she has a lot of power and will to the city, and apparently she's not, um, talking to the ordinary people, is to whatever, um, I'm not saying that you don't deserve a raise, but a sixty-four percent, that's fifty thousand dollars within a few months, that's ridiculous. Put this question to the city charter amendment next year for the people on Oahu to vote whether a sixty-four percent raise is actually, um, the right thing for your position. And regarding getting another job, some of you that have good jobs actually make more than what you're getting paid as a council member. So I suggest that this goes to the city charter amendment for voting by the Oahu, but, um, registered voters, because people are not, are going to just sit by and says, oh, oh yeah, you deserve sixty-four percent raise. Who does that? Especially when, where is the money coming from? People are struggling now. So please, please rethink this because, and go it back, and then really make sure that you have the public be able to hear what the, um, big concerns are, because it's a big, big issue for the whole island. Thank you.
Chair Manager Stone? Thank you. Um, two things. The raises for both the council and the administration and the prosecutor amount to point zero four percent of the entire budget. Point zero four percent, that's four tenths of one percent. But, considering where that money comes from. But I agree with you. I think the charter really should be changed. Honolulu is the only county that has the ability to vote on their own raises. Every other county doesn't do that. That's, that's number one. Number two, I'm thinking of this from a clean government standpoint. Like I have a second job. I think most of us have second jobs, which that in and of itself, in, in some certain times, creates a conflict of interest, right? So, coupled with Resolution twenty-three dash one oh nine, which I introduced, which would limit us all to one job, right? Because we don't want to have any conflict of interest. And by the way, that would go on the ballot coming up, whether or not we should just have one job. I really believe, and by the way, when I go through my presentation, you'll see exactly what we do every day, which is very complex, very hard. And I think in order to do this job correctly, you gotta do it and focus on it all your might, seriously. You don't want somebody distracted working for somebody else. By the way, when you're paid by somebody else, you have two bosses now. But I really believe you should have one boss, the people. That's who you should be working for. And so, if you take the, the pay increase, coupled with the resolution that I introduced, limiting us to one job, it turns out this is a clean government job, right? I mean, there's a lot of things that went on in the legislature this past couple years, where people went to jail for taking bribes, right? Why nickel and dime these lawmakers? Pay them a decent wage, that way, and only have one job. That way, you don't have this outside influence, right? That's just my opinion. That's why I'm standing tall on this. It's a difficult decision, you guys. I, I acknowledge that. But as a leader, I'm fighting for that. It's a clean government measure in my mind, right? We want good people representing us who are going to work hard, concentrate, and focus on this job.
Thank you, Council Chair, and, and I was wondering if, um, Council Member Calvin Say was here tonight, just to add perspective, but, um.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi.
Uh, hello?
I'm from, this is Judy. I'm from Council Member Say's office. He apologizes, but he is unable to attend tonight as an important matter has come up that requires his attention. He apologizes.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, just double check, but, um, like I said, uh, you know, ultimately, this was, um, you know, referred to me by several other neighborhood board chairs. I just think it's sort of a, it was a time, timeline, uh, thing, but I, but it was, I think, still important to at least have, uh, the Council Chair and, um, uh, Council Member Say's, uh, office here. Um, some of the, um, thoughts and ideas on this topic, and, uh, unless, is there anyone from, okay, Arlene?
Um, yes, I think my concern when I first heard about the raise has been, um, that in the past, there's been a lot of discussion about how much hour, how many hours that this job requires of you. And I know it's a lot of hours. I see people at meetings at night, during the day. I know it requires a lot of, um, interaction with everyone. It's been hours on the phone. I understand all that. What my concern is, that we, the job description wasn't changed first, and then the pay rate. Change the job description to full-time, which it is definitely full-time. And then, then your salary would definitely be adjusted, and there wouldn't have been this controversy. That's my concern. That's how it was approached, not, not the legitimacy of your work and of the hours you guys put in. I understand that, and you do need more money. And we need our next council members to have enough money to live comfortably here and not take bribes. So, you know, that's an important consideration. So that's what I, my comments.
Thank you. Um, Michelle?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with, uh, Board Member Velasco, um, that, uh, the job description should have been improved and, uh, and agreed upon by, uh, the, the larger public, uh, for full-time in order to merit, uh, executive-type income. And legislation is execution of, uh, laws and policies. Um, my, uh, concern, in addition to the job description, is that there is at least one council member that does not represent their constituents. We have seen this in a very blatant form very recently. There was no consideration of the neighborhood board's position. No acknowledgement of the neighborhood board's position. And no consideration for the constituents' concerns or the city and county's zoning regulations. And there may be all kinds of reasons that we're going to hear as to why certain things had to happen. But the bottom line is the welfare and the perpetuation of stable communities. And we need our council members to represent us, help us, and do, uh, things to improve the quality of life in Honolulu, not degrade it, uh, for special interests. So, um, I do support the, uh, the income increase, but only on the conditions that we have a clear job description, a clear commitment from our council members regarding that job description, and full support of the community's interests and concerns, and not special interests. And if they can commit to that, I'm all for the higher, uh, pay level. Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you, Michelle. Um, at, at this point, I don't, oh, I see Margaret.
I listened to the whole thing yesterday, and I can't believe Tommy's here. That was gruesome. I was really, that was really tough. There were a lot of people waiting for a long time to talk, and it got pretty rough. And I admired the way that he was very patient and calm and professional. But I feel sorry, and there were, uh, good, you know, August, August Alboza, you know, he's a comedian, but he's one of the best councilmen we have there. And Andrea DiPolo, they are attentive, they review things, they ask good questions. When I testified on things down at the council, they asked good questions and were interested, and not everyone was. But I feel that, you know, maybe he wouldn't have applied for the job if he had known that he couldn't keep his career. So maybe, is there any way that they could defer the second, you know, the second job thing? I mean, Caldwell sent a, sent a horrible precedent. You know, I think that's what happened. He said, everybody was upset about that, but I, and I know you guys work full-time, and Tommy, I know that you're always there for us. But I just think that maybe they should implement it next year, and then maybe they'll have the opportunity to either, you know, re-up their position or not, knowing that they can't keep their careers. Because there were some really good points, and everyone should look at that whole, well, maybe not the whole meeting, but, um, it was painful, and Calvin Say was definitely called out, you know, by somebody from his district, and it was, he said that he was at our meetings. At the end of it, he addressed the guy that was calling him out and said that he had attended our meetings, and his staff has attended our meetings, but he has not attended our meetings. So it was just kind of interesting, and he felt that they deserved the money. And, um, I don't know, maybe he's at the end of his career and is hoping to increase his pension. Anyway.
Hey, Linda? Linda? Okay, um, so at this point, um, I do think it was, um, important for, uh, the Council Chair to hear some of our discussion on this. I'm not entirely sure how applicable, um, this resolution is at this point. Um, from what I understand, um, it seems like it, uh, the process is just moving along, but, um, but I do, unless there's any other, um, recommendation, but I would just say at this point, um, you know, since it's already moving forward, just to defer, unless there, like I said, unless there's any, um, other, um, decision on that, but, um, you know, I, I do appreciate, uh, the Council Chair for providing, um, additional insight into this. And if there is, uh, just no other comments on it, then I think we can.
Chair, I do have a comment. I got unmuted finally.
Okay, Linda.
Okay, thank you. Um, I understand and I agree with the thought. Um, I understand and I agree with the thought of being able to hire the best man for the job. And I'm, we're all suffering here, believe me, and, uh, priced out of paradise. Um, but I do not like at all being, having no hearings, to have no voice. It's, uh, supposed to be a democracy, and I don't think we should be locked out of hearings. Sylvia Luke did that to me one time, and I couldn't believe it. Um, so I agree with that, but the big jump in only for, what, three people or something, you know, is just, it sounds lopsided. So like they were saying, with the job description, I don't think it was completely thought out, or it doesn't seem to be. But it was a good idea gone wrong. So, uh, the idea of the city charter is an excellent idea, maybe you should consider that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michelle?
I'd like to move to support, uh, this resolution, uh, because it, it does exactly what Board Member Wong has been concerned about. It affords a public hearing to this issue rather than pushing it under the rug. Uh, and, uh, so, I mean, I could, I could give my reasons during discussion, if there is any, but that's my motion, to support the resolution before us, because I do understand our colleagues in, uh, who provided this resolution. Thank you.
All right, so it has been moved to support the resolution requesting the Honolulu City Council to conduct a public hearing and vote on Resolution 23-82 relating to council pay raises. Um, is there a second to that?
I'm seconding.
Okay, it's been seconded by Julia Allen. Are there any final comments on this? Linda?
Uh, no, thank you.
Michelle, did you have anything else?
I, no, I, I think the resolution speaks for itself, and I think that there has been a lot of public concern and confusion, and the council members could, could really provide the public venue for this discussion. Um, and there's a question of why that's not happening. Thank you.
Okay, uh, David?
Thank you, Chair Waters. I just want to say that I, uh, agree with, um, the Council Chair and, uh, the Salary Commission. Uh, I think they're, they've had public hearings, and, um, and I think that the council needs higher pay, and, well, I won't repeat all the reasons, but, um, yeah, basically, I, I oppose the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Um, seeing no other hands, um, it has been moved and seconded to support a resolution requesting the Honolulu City Council to conduct a public hearing and vote on Resolution 23-82 relating to council pay raises. Uh, Dylan?
Just doing the roll call. Allen?
Aye.
Acina?
Nae.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Uh, just for a moment, let me take a free check. Um, all board members, please turn your cameras on, just to make sure we have eight per forum. We have four in person, so I just need four online. I see one, two, three, four, thank you very much. Murchy?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Narita? Uh, can you do thumbs up or thumbs down? Thank you. There's an aye from Narita. Bruce Wong? Boidle?
Nae.
Whitesell?
Abstain.
Murakawa? There was an aye from Murakawa. Welch? Velasco?
Aye.
Mattson?
Aye.
Persons? Linda Wong?
Abstain.
Abstain, correct. Uh, the motion does not pass with six aye, two no, two abstentions. Thank you.
All right, uh, as there is, uh, no more board business tonight, we will move on to item number seven, elected officials. Council Chair Tommy Waters.
Okay, um, I feel much more comfortable now. Um, not necessarily because the motion failed, I thought it would. I heard you folks, really, I did. And I really think we should make substantial changes in how this is done. But I am really excited to tell you about what's been going on at the Honolulu City Council. So we approved the $3.4 billion budget last night. This is executive budget, $3.4 billion. That's two hu, this is the highest budget that's ever been approved by the city and county of Honolulu. It's $200 million over last year's budget. And for the most part, it was, it was presented to us from the executive branch. But while working with Councilmember Cordero, who is the Budget Chair, who I appointed as the Budget Chair, we worked together and we cut it back down to last year's budget in our committee draft, right? The first draft that came out, we said, no. You gotta justify this $200 million more that you wanna spend. And we made every department come in, and we painstakingly went through and asked questions on what you're gonna do with this money, right? And ultimately, what we came up with, and, and by the way, we wanted to provide long-term tax relief for, for folks as well. What the mayor had wanted to do was give a one-time $300 tax credit in Bill 14, which ultimately passed last, last night. But, you know, folks, $300, many people told me, you know, that's not very significant. Take that money and use it to clean our parks, right? But if you think about it, um, we wanted to give more. Uh, Ted Capales from the Grassroots Institute, and I, you know, I never really agreed with the Grassroots Institute of many things, but you know what, this guy was really smart, and he told us $380 is the average amount that people's taxes went up from last year to this year. And if we could get up to $380, um, he thinks that would be fair. Well, we got it up to $350, $350. So you're getting a one-time tax credit of $350. But that's what we were doing in scrutinizing what the administration was saying. And really, that's the, the difficult part, right? That's the part where you actually gotta go through and read these binders. There are binders and binders of pages and pages, and a lot's hidden in there, and it's important to be able to ask those types of questions. But anyway, we came up with $350 a one-time tax credit. The other thing that we did was, a lot of people said that we need to provide relief for landlords who are renting their properties to local people. That was the second thing we wanted to address. There's this thing, the city law, that was passed before I got there called residential A property tax. Residential A property tax taxes folks who have second and third homes higher than, than regular people. And yes, for the most part, that's good. But what's happening was, it starts at second homes that are worth a million dollars or more. Well, guess what? The median home price in Honolulu is $1.1 million, so it affects an awful lot of people. And by the way, these are rental homes, so I wanted to provide some sort of relief. So we thought about raising the threshold from a million dollars up to $1.3 million. But through our conversations with the administration, that's gonna result in about $54 million less than revenue. That was a huge hit, because the $350, um, that we're gonna give back in the one-time tax credit is gonna cost taxpayers of the city in revenues $54 million. So we thought, you know what? I came up with this idea, working with, uh, my colleague, that we adjusted the rate for the residential A, um, the tax rate. And by the way, the tax rate has not been adjusted in a long time, right? So, for $4.50 for the first million, and it, that's what it currently is, and the second million, and these are your second homes, by the way, was $10.40. What I thought was, hey, why don't we reduce it on the first million and increase it on the second million? And I worked out all the numbers, and I have them here, and I just wanna explain a couple of them for you. So on a million-dollar home, and again, we're talking about people with second homes, right? And presumably, a million-dollar home, especially where I live in Kamaki, you're not talking about something all that nice, it's a bust-up home. But these are rental homes. So you currently pay $4,500 in tax under the current law, 'cause the mayor hasn't signed this yet. Under what I proposed, your new tax would be $4,000. The difference is $500. You save $500, plus the $350 that you're getting in the one-time tax credit. So that amounts to $850 this year for those folks, right? That's significant, right? The $350, people are saying, don't give it to me. But if you add them two, and a lot of people in Hawaii actually do own two homes. But again, we're trying to help the landlords reduce their costs so that they don't have to pass on that cost to the tenant. At some point, it gets inverted though, right? So at $1.1 million, you save $410. At $1.2 million, you save $320. But when it gets to $1.5 million, and again, your $1.5 million home still could be a rental, but your tax would go down 50 bucks. And then it inverts at $1.6 million and above. So if you own a second home at $1.6 million and above, your taxes are starting to go up. But at $1.6 million, your tax only goes up $40, right? So that's how we did it, it's, um, revenue neutral, this, this idea. And that's in Resolution 23-33, if you folks wanna look it up. But what did we do with the $3.4 billion, folks? One of the things that I heard you all talk about in all of the seven neighborhood boards that I go through is public safety. People wanna feel safe in their homes, right? So what we did was, we increased the budget for the Honolulu Police Department by $43 million over what they got last year. Remember last year, I came in and I told you that we increased their budget by $12 million? So if you think about it, in the two years that I've been chair, we've increased the budget of HPD to $354 million. But it's a lot. But I've always campaigned on this, and I believe it, that a patrolling police officer is the best deterrent to crime, right? You could be going 15 miles an hour, you see a policeman behind you, you step on your brake, right? Same with the criminals. When they see a patrolling police officer, they go someplace else. So $35 million out of the $43 million is for patrol. We want patrolling police officers. Um, Honolulu Fire Department got $146 million, eight million more than they got last year. EMS, EMS has been hurting, and EMS has a hard time filling these positions too, talking about ambulance, yeah? So $11 million more than last year. Our lifeguards, our lifeguards. One of the things I've been, I fought for since I got here was dawn to dusk, lifeguard, dawn to dusk, right? Because people, they leave at 5 o'clock, it's a 9 to 5 job, people still swim, especially now when the sun doesn't go out, down till 7:30, 8 o'clock. We want our lifeguards there on the beach, right? This is Hawaii, right? So we added, I fought for, 30 new positions, right? They're using a lot of contract hires for these jobs, and I wanted to say, hey, no, let's make these permanent positions. The other thing I do wanna actually fight for, lifeguards aren't paid enough, nowhere near enough. And these guys put their lives on the line, especially like Waimea Bay and every place else. These guys put their life on the line, and we gotta fight for them to increase their pay. Another thing I wanted to point out, that through collective bargaining, there is pay raises across the board for everyone, from police officers to clerks, to, you know, parks people. That costs taxpayers an additional $100 million. So practically half of the amount of money that we got as a result of the higher tax revenues went to pay collective bargains, so we could pay our workers more money. Um, you know, homelessness and housing, affordable housing is a huge problem in our city. And by the way, it's nationwide. As the Chair of the City Council, I actually belong to the National League of Cities, and I meet with chairs from all over the, the country, and it's the same thing everywhere. So we made a concerted effort and put in this capital improvement budget. $170 million for affordable housing, and $35 million for homeless service facilities. You know, we gotta find and build places for people to live. We can't just keep moving around. I support these enforcements that go on in Diamond Head, folks, and I keep pushing for that and trying to make it as comfortable, uncomfortable as possible for people to live on the slopes of Diamond Head. But what happens is, and you guys see it, when the enforcement goes on, they just get up and are walking through our neighborhoods until the enforcement's done, and then they go right back there. Well, I'm trying to get a police officer, you know, a patrolling police officer, park his car right there at the top of Diamond Head, and when these guys come back, well, stop, where are you going? Park's closed. And I'm pushing to get the park to close earlier, so the police can enforce that and, and, and stop this from happening. But ultimately, folks, we gotta build places for people to live, right? A lot of folks say, no, why should we have to do that? Well, fact of the matter is, if we don't, nobody will, right? Couple of things I want also, you know, um, um, Arlene, remember a couple of years ago, the Parks Department put up a gate at Makalei Beach Park, right? Because there was a gap, and a lady fell through the gap and got hurt and sued the city. Well, we fought and got it taken down. But guess what? A whole chunk of the railing has now fallen into the ocean. And I'm like, saying, no, Lauren DeLan, please don't put up the gate, I know Arlene's gonna get mad at me, and we're gonna have a huge fight over this. And so far, they haven't put up a gate. But guess what, guys? There is a huge chunk, and when, property owners are really concerned too, because they could get sued if somebody falls off there, as well as the city and the state. And when I asked the city, hey, let's go fix this, they said, no, 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 that's the state. And then when we, I talked to the state, Department of Land and Natural Resources, they said, no, 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 that's the city. So ultimately, we, I did my research, and it looks like the state was the last one to fix the railing.
Yeah.
Right? So they're telling me, well, it's the state. So here's, I have an idea, so we got our state representatives. I put in $500,000 in this year's budget to plan, design, and construct, and inspect, and repair that railing. But it's a lot. But, I mean, if you think about it, what needs to happen? You're working in the ocean, right? This thing is, is gotta be sturdy, we don't want anybody to fall in. But we need matching funds from the state. So I'm asking my state counterparts to work with DeLanar to kick in some money. That way, we can't point the finger at each other anymore. We gotta say, wait, we do this together, right? Let's fix this together. Um, Kaumana Beach Park, like I said, I know Linda Wong's been fighting for this for three years, it's almost...
It's gonna be finished September, yeah, September 1st.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm so happy. And by the way, this was your guys' idea, that, that we're finally getting it done. Um, but you know what I wanna do? Go further, plant grass, make it all nice. That park is a beautiful park, lots of local people go there. Make it nice.
It is gonna be...
By the way, Michelle Mattson, I think you'd like this. You've convinced me to include Diamond Head, Leahii, and Kapohulu in the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan.
Yay!
I got three more years as your council member. I'm gonna get it done. I'm gonna get it done, right now...
Tommy, it was also St. Louis Heights. It was the entire board district with the resolution. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, St. Louis Heights is not my district, but I'll see what I can do. Um, I, I like Vaahila, by the way, I, I have to say. But, hey, so here's what we gotta do, let's gotta, let's work together on this. I can't just change the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan to add it, which we will do, but the, the urban core plan needs to be changed, and the general plan needs to be changed. In order to do all these three things, if it, if it, if I'm doing it, I have to introduce a resolution, get it passed the council, then it gotta go to the Planning Commission, then it gotta come back to us. But what I wanna do, Michelle, is let's do them all concurrently, just do it all one time. So the Planning Commission knows exactly what we want to do. So I'm working on drafting that, and you know this, Michelle, DPP gave me a hard time. They're like, no, no, no... They're like, no, 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 you don't know what you're doing. And where I live in Kamaki, looking across Diamond Head and Kahala, and if those buildings weren't built, man, it would be a nicer place, right? I'm talking about the Kahala Towers, that one by the, the building by Kahala Mall. Same thing, man, we gotta protect Kapohulu, in my mind, right? We gotta protect Kapohulu, where you live, Wendell. By the way, you still get the the fake grass in front of your house. There's a lot of fake grass places in Kapohulu. But anyway, because I walk door to door, and I came through this house, that's how I know. But I'm gonna get it done, uh Michelle Matson, and and I'm gonna need this board's support. When it comes up for a hearing, come down and testify. Say, you know what? We live here, we want this, right? I need you guys. Can I just be me, standing alone, going, you know, is that the Diamond Head Neighborhood Board? Everybody told me they wanted this. And they're gonna be like, where are they? I need you guys behind me for that. Um. What else? War Memorial, guys, the mayor put in another five hundred thousand dollars for the War Memorial. And I'm like, yeah, are we really gonna spend thirty-six to forty-five million dollars upgrading this? Because that's how much the EIS was saying it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
I would love to do it, I would love to restore it. I think it's a beautiful structure, and it commemorates World War One um folks who died. But you guys, that's a lot of money. But you know what? I supported it, because the mayor was telling me, and his director um uh of TDC, Design and Constructors, saying, no, 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 we're gonna get private funding. This five hundred thousand is seed money. So we put this in last year, nothing happened. We put it in this year again, but I'll keep you folks abreast of what's going on with that. By the way, we got money in the CIP for this building, Alawai Golf Course, clubhouse roof and related improvements, one point one million. And I noticed we finally got the lights fixed. I think it was because the mayor had his uh town hall meeting, and they said, you cannot have them dark in here, but they finally got them fixed. Because initially, when I was first coming to these these meetings, and it was all dark, I thought it was ambiance. I later found the lights wasn't working. Um you know, I don't know if you guys are gonna like this, but there's money in the budget for the zoo. Um I know the avian thing was kinda controversial. You know, there's a surfrax in Waikiki. Um. I got lots of pages, but you know, I've been, I'm, don't wanna hog the mic. I know you got a lot more people who wanna talk, but uh Waikiki Fire Station, is that in your guys' uh?
Yeah.
jurisdiction? Yep, there's money in the budget to upgrade the Waikiki Fire Station, Waikiki Police Station, Surfrax in Waikiki, that's outside. Um Kapua Lani Park, shared use path improvements. That was really nice, the new path that was going around, um but we wanna do more. Anyway, Red Hill, can I talk about Red Hill for a second too? You know what? I and and Border Water Supply, bless their hearts. But what we didn't talk about earlier was, there's these PFAS chemicals, these forever chemicals that are used to put out fires. Those things were spilled, and that's leaking into our groundwater. So I um we passed the resolution last night asking the Navy to test the the PFAS chemicals and report it back to us. Border Water Supply wrote Department of Defense a letter, and they just ignored them, just ignored them. So the council's getting behind this, and and we're gonna hold them accountable. I belong to a group with the governor, the mayor, the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, Council Chair of the Honolulu City Council, and a few other, Department of Health. And we're gonna hold the Navy accountable, guys. You know, we don't want what happened at Kahoolave, where they bombed the island so bad it actually broke the water table. There's no drinking water there, clean drinking water from groundwater there, it's broken. But what the Navy did was, they said, okay, through Congress, we got four hundred million dollars for you to fix, clean up the ordinance, and then they backed away. We can't let them do this here. We gotta keep them accountable. They cannot just throw money at it one time and say, we're done. No way. And the group, the group that I just said, we all met about two weeks ago, and we locked arms and said, nobody, no, we're in this together, guys. Don't go cut side deals and and have some money and say you're gonna clean it and then leave. Because what we'd heard, guys, you know the silos, right? With the the storage tanks? The siphon that pumps the the fuel out doesn't go to the bottom of these silos. So you got all this fuel on the very bottom that you cannot get out using what they have now. So there's fuel down there, and by the way, these things are leaking, they leak. There's fuel, there's a quarter-inch stainless steel, which was built eighty years ago, quarter-inch stainless steel, right? In um inside of a cement cylinder. We've been saying this for years, that the stainless steel, eighty years old, the thing is rusted, it's leaking. So guess what? They finally admit, two nights ago in our meeting, that there's fuel in between the cement and the steel. So if it's in between the cement and the steel, the cement is porous. It's leaking into our our um ground rock, right? We all know how we get our water. It filters through the mountain and goes down into the aquifer. So this fuel is in the ground rock right now. As far as I know, there's no technology to suck it out of rock, right? It's gonna eventually get to our groundwater. That's why we cannot let these guys off the hook and say, okay, we're taking the fuel, and we're gonna put it in these new silos built above ground, which is, hey, we're thankful for that. But what about the fuel in the groundwater? That's probably gonna take years before it gets into the water. We cannot let these guys go. Um, okay, Chair. Oh, one more thing, sorry. So the council did, this is federal funds that are coming in um for rental relief. So we put another twenty-five billion dollars for folks who still have problems paying their rent, right? So there's a new portal that's going to open on July thirteenth at two P M called RevitalizeOahu.org forward slash RentHelp. So if you guys know anybody who still needs help with rent relief, we just put another twenty-five million towards that. And uh, okay, that's it. Double for questions.
All right, thank you very much, Council Chair. Um are there any comments uh from the public here?
So um I'd like to know about, so this time with the sixty-four percent raise, we're going with the law, right? That's what I'm understanding. It's a done deal. Yeah, no, I just wanted you to say that. The other thing that was brought up at um a community meeting for um the Kool-Aid Place is that um your zoning committee that put that through with the council, there was some money put in there, campaign donations of the tune of eighty thousand dollars. I think what we're complaining about here is the fact that even though you say that the Charter Commission had public hearings, nobody knew about it. I don't know where they get, you know, in other words, the, we were not informed. And uh there's a lack of sensitivity on the part of the council that we are in financial trouble, most of the people here, and uh most of our residents. And to take this this uh increase at sixty-four percent, though it sounds horrible, it's got sixteen years behind it of not having a raise, nineteen or whatever you said. It's still not addressing the fact that we're in an inflationary time and that people are getting five percent raises. So I mean, it's nice to say as a politician that we're gonna do this, that, and the other in the future, but what's going on right now? In that Kool-Aid Place, and then you pass two other um affordable housing, which we know is not affordable. The AMIs do not match the Census Bureau's AMIs for the district they're going in, so they're not affordable. You just, I wanna make that clear.
Thank you so much. Um I do wanna address Kool-Aid Place if I can. So there's a statute passed by the legislature, section two zero one subsection H, um that trumps, in a way, I hate using that word, trumps um what what this council can do. We have to follow it. The idea really behind this was that we wanted to make sure counties are building affordable housing. So they said that the county has to give relief on all these permitting fees. And and the, once it's transmitted to us, we got forty-five days to act on it. If we don't do anything, it's automatically approved. So I, we got a couple legislators on here, and if you folks feel strong about it, we should ask the legislature to change that. Brandon Alefanti was on the council with me, is now a senator, and he tried to change it, to make it a longer period so that we don't have to act right away, right? It's hard to get people out, right? Even on something like changing the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan, it's hard to get people out there. So it's hard to get people out within forty-five days. So it turns out, it's just an up or a down vote, because it's gotta go. One hearing at the zoning committee, one hearing at full council, then done. One of the things I'd like to see, and perhaps we can look at changing this, is before it even comes to the council, that these um projects gotta come to you folks, right? You folks can opine on it. I think they do do some community meetings, but I've read the transcript on these community meetings, not necessarily on this one, but others that I've seen, where you got two people from the community who come. I'm like, oh my God, did you send out letters? You know, maybe we gotta do text alerts, you know? Use social media to get the word out to come to these meetings. But that's the problem, that was the problem. We got forty-five days, and if we don't do anything, it's automatically approved. Um. The other problem with this particular uh Kool-Aid Place is that it's in the urban core, right? The council, over the years, has spent a lot of time with the general plan, the urban core plan, the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan, and it's in there. So DPP's hands, I mean, you heard from DPP, I don't wanna talk for DPP. But that was part of the problem too. It's like, these things happen so fast. But anyway, good point. Oh, since I'm on the subject. You know, I first got elected to the council, we talked about area median income. And the city's definition of affordable is one hundred twenty percent of the area median income. Get this, though, the state's definition of affordable is hundred forty percent of the area median income. So guess what happens? Developers don't apply for these the these um benefits through the city. They'd rather go to the state. And then the state comes in, we're like, here's our package, we got it approved by the state. I said, wait, it's hundred forty. That's that's market rate, if you ask me. Affordable is a is a relative term. It's more like eighty percent AMI. By the way, council members make sixty percent AMI, just saying. But affordable is eighty percent. In my mind, affordable is more like eighty percent AMI. And by the way, people who work McDonald's and ABC, that's thirty percent AMI. Who's building houses for these guys? Now, what we're trying to do at the council is squeeze the developers, start building at thirty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI. Otherwise, we wouldn't get a lot more homeless people, right? Unless we start getting these developers to do it. Catholic Charities is doing it, right? Part of the deal there is Catholic Charities is donating the land, right? They're donating the land, so that's a huge thing. One of the things I did, infrastructure is big too. If the developer gotta put in the sewer lines and the water lines and all that, it rises the cost. Maybe that's where the city can jump in. We'll bring in the infrastructure. And what I put this money, this hundred seventy million, I've tried to get Department of Land Management go buy land, buy the land. We put the infrastructure in, get somebody else to build it. We just tell them, we want it at thirty percent AMI, or we want it at fifty percent AMI. That's what we did at Haleviolu on River Street. We owned the land. It's kinda controversial, because it's right next to a crematorium, but um the, that wasn't made it uh controversial, by the way. Had a land owner next door that didn't want senior housing, but we owned the land. We turned it over to Michael, this developer, and they, we just told him, you gotta build it at sixty percent AMI. Hundred fifty-five units, they got it done. So to me, that's the recipe. We already know, we can build these if we have the land and put the infrastructure. That's why we put money in the budget to to do exactly that. I know I talk too much, sorry. And I'm not sure if I answered all your questions, but that's what's going on with Kool-Aid Place.
All right, so sorry to do this, Chair, uh but we are over time. Um I would recommend that we defer everything else to the next meeting. And thank you, everybody, for the term. This is the last meeting of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three neighborhood board term. Um, yeah, it's now uh nine oh seven. Um I think this meeting was quite long. Um so is is the, does, are we going to lose internet? Um.
Sorry, two things with this, yeah, it's not just, I have something. Um our Lalo contractor, AV guy, he's contracted for the three hours. This building, the room that we're in, is for three hours. If this was a virtual-only meeting, the board could run all night long without our services, but that is not legally allowed at this time. So we're in a venue that we have to set up per the law. It can only be for three hours. We just hit three hours. Not much of a conversation to be had now.
Okay, um so with that said, it sounds like uh our contractor has is contracted for his time and uh the broadcast is going to go off and um. So just really quickly.
I'd like to mention something really quickly. Uh it's because of the, it's because of the Neighborhood Commission's Executive Secretary's policies that our meetings are cut off and the contracts are shortened. We never had this before. So uh other boards are getting together to to speak on this, and I think our board should do. And I will fa, I will forward the information to you as the independent chair of our board. Thank you.
Okay, uh yeah, forward me the information you have, and I can forward that along to um the Executive Secretary.
It's currently being developed.
Okay, well, just let me know when you have uh what you have proposed.
I think we need to apologize to Jackson Slayalna for waiting.
Yes, 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 I agree.
And Stanley Chang, maybe if he's.
Yes.
No worries, I'll be here next, next month.
Yep, but it uh, so with the current circumstance, um the next Diamond Head, Kapohulu, St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board meeting scheduled for Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the golf course, um and virtually via web apps. Uh with that said, nine oh nine, meetings adjourned.
Thank you.